Good evening. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello? Hello? Thank you. Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Our student board member, Ayana Torres, Cabrillo High School, will lead us in the pledge.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in front at the assistant secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item that you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not to individual members of the board or to the staff. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. Public hearing, there is none. Call for agenda items for separate action adoption if the agenda is posted.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board. We're so thankful that each week, each board meeting, we have a student board member. So I want to make an adjustment to the agenda that we move the student board member report under, from the end of the meeting, to number eighteen under communications because it's finals week and we want to make sure that you have plenty of time to study.
Okay.
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. The motion is approved unanimously. Approval amendments.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. The motion is approved unanimously. Now we get to communications and our student board member, Ayana, tell us about Cabrillo High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ayana Torres and I am the ASB Student Council President at Cabrillo High School. I'm excited to be here tonight to be able to share with you all of the exciting things that we have planned for this school year, but I promise to keep it short. There is, we finally have opened our Cabrillo's closet this year, which has provided any of our students in need with free clothing and toiletries on an ongoing basis. Helping our students be successful is a priority for us. In activities, it has been jam-packed this year with several events and initiatives designed for their, designed to further build community across campus. From record-breaking attendance at our Sadie's High School Dance this fall, in which we honored having Mr. Camerino Assistant Superintendent of High School stop by and see how fun the event was, to a very successful blood drive in partnership with Cedar Sinai, we also have an amazing homecoming week in which we had more students and teachers participate in this year than the years past. We are looking to our spring semester as we plan our winter formal, A Night to Shine, on February eighth at Cabrillo in the big gym, and if you would like to stop by, that would be very nice. We also have cupcakes for finals, feeling the love in February for Valentine's Day and our senior events. This year for Cabrillo Council of Student Athletics really got to, really got to promote the wonderful athletic events happening at school. COSA also helps with senior recognition ceremonies, halftime contests, and the overall climate and culture at Cabrillo regarding athletic programs. The class approves budget expenditures for athletic programs before passing them on to ASB, teaching students how to financially be responsible, as well as providing a system of checks and balances. COSA also allows students leadership responsibilities at the same time as focusing on their love of the game. We are very excited to win the Howard Lions Sportsmanship Award for the More League for the fall, for the fall sports. Cabrillo received eleven votes from the More League teams, five votes more than the second place team. This award shows that, oh my god, I'm so sorry. This award shows that a positive attitude and positive sportsmanship is just as important as winning the game. In academic news, link learning is thriving at Cabrillo. All four of our pathways is either certified gold or silver. Currently, our Cabrillo Academy of Law and Justice is link learning gold, but hopefully our Academy of Global Logistics will also be gold before the end of the school year. Each pathway has developed a strong program of studies to integrate the industry theme and create cohesion with academic and career technical courses. Personalized student support has grown and expanded with teachers and counselors collaborating more efficiently. Work-based learning has multiplied and evolved as Cabrillo students to strengthen relationships with the community and industry partners. We are proud of all of our pathways and the success it has provided for our students. It's a very exciting time at Cabrillo and our student leadership programs are currently working on more ways to increase success in the west. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayana, for that report. It's traditional for us to ask questions about our student board member. You're a senior, right?
Correct.
Okay. Have you decided on a college that you plan to attend?
Well, I plan to be playing soccer for college and I would love to go to UC Davis to also study to be a veterinarian.
Very good. Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So that means you really do have to get out here to study, right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are now at public testimony on items listed on the agenda. We have a thirty-minute time period for items listed on the agenda. I have a number of requests here, and in the event that I don't call your name, you can still leave your information with the assistant secretary if your name is not called, if we exceed the thirty-minute limit.
Mr. President, given that we really uphold the value of community engagement, we have two historic and important items on our agenda tonight, I move that we extend our public comment time for items listed on our agenda.
Okay.
So that we have an opportunity to hear from as many of our community members that took time out of their days to be here tonight.
Very good. Do I get a motion on it?
I move to extend time on items on the agenda.
Listed on the agenda.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we know how much we're going to extend that by?
Can we get a rough count, Mr. President, on how many folks submitted?
We have.
Sixteen to twenty.
Sixteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty?
Thirty minutes. So can we extend time thirty minutes?
Okay.
For items on the agenda, on the agenda.
Now, we're at, yeah, items listed on the agenda. Thirty-minute extension. Further discussion?
Clarify, you're extending it an additional thirty minutes to an hour?
Correct. That's the proposal.
That's too long.
So, let's call for a vote.
Is it, is there a way to negotiate votes that if we drop down time to two minutes per person and extend by fifteen minutes? Does that give us a couple more, gives us more voices in the conversation, but just a little bit shorter?
You can modify the motion to do exactly that.
Okay, so do I have to remove?
Brandon, does she have to remove the motion or should they, sorry?
I withdraw my motion, my original motion?
So my motion is still, my motion is still on.
To extend.
To extend thirty minutes. The proposal would be to extend.
So the friendly amendment to that motion is to do it to reduce the speaking time to two minutes per person and extend the time to forty-five minutes.
So does the moving party accept the friendly amendment?
I don't. I'd like, I'd like, again, to reiterate, at our last board meeting, we talked about the important process that we were going to undertake tonight as an action item for the search for a new superintendent, and we invited folks to come to public comment. So I'd like to honor our commitment to community engagement by extending time thirty minutes and, you know, continue the three minutes per comment.
Is there still a second on the unamended motion to extend by thirty minutes?
I'll second. My second stands then.
Then after discussion, there would be a vote.
Repeat that.
So there's been a motion to extend it by an additional thirty minutes. That motion was made by my member Benitez. Member Courage seconded that. After you call for additional discussion, then there would be a vote. If that motion passes three or more, then the motion is successful. If not, there may or may not be an additional motion for a different amount of time.
Okay. So we can call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's do it by show of hands. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved? Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Chet Davidson, Long Beach Unified School District, sorry, CSEA Vice President. I came to speak to you about the superintendent selection. You have a very significant decision in the days to come when selecting a new superintendent. This quite possibly could be the most critical vote of your tenure at Long Beach Unified. Board members and potential board members, tonight I need your reassurance to keep an open line of communication to the leadership of CSEA. We are stakeholders in the selection process. As a bargaining unit here at Long Beach Unified, there has been a lack of recognition for the merits and services provided to the students and staff of this great school district. The perspective of CSEA needs improvement, and that starts at the top. There needs to be change as we enter a new year, a new decade, and a new superintendent. CSEA has skin in the game, and we should not be treated lesser employee regardless of a job title. My goal moving forward is to rebuild communications with Taub. We are stronger when we work together. The same is true working with the Board of Education to ensure people are represented, to ensure that people we represent are treated fairly and equitable. CSEA is the largest classified union in the nation at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand members, twenty-three hundred strong here in Long Beach. We are the first face as the children see in the morning. We are the first responders. We turn on the heat, we fix the air conditioning, we cut the grass and trim the trees, process payroll, feed the students, run the offices, and ensure safety, and most importantly, we protect and serve the students of Long Beach Unified. In a closing quote from the state Capitol, "If you're not at the table, you're probably on the menu." I came here tonight to remind you that we are at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Chet. Chris Hanen?
My name is Chris Hanen. I'm a council representative for the Los Angeles Orange Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. Wanted to address the board this afternoon in support of the approval of the Community Workforce Agreement that was negotiated between our Building Trades Council and the district. After tough negotiations, we have a solid agreement that, number one, the students are going to benefit from. You have, you're going to have a full-time apprenticeship coordinator or apprenticeship career counselor funded by the building trades. You're going to have a scholarship program backed by the building trades so that there will be no financial obstacle for one of your students to get into one of our apprenticeship programs, where there would be a need for hand tools, where there would be a need for initiation fees. There should be no financial barriers to get in our apprenticeship. And finally, you're going to have priority access for your students into our apprenticeship programs. It's not just for the students, it's for their families and their communities as well. The goals in this agreement are going to double your local hire participation right now in your current projects. And apologize a little bit for the large group. We didn't invite everybody and ask for the place to be overrun. What we did is we put out a, an invitation that we were coming down here to support the agreement, and this is the kind of enthusiasm you have from your community for a chance to work on their schools, and this is what the best-trained construction workforce in the world looks like. Look forward to a long partnership with the district.
I may not get this last name correct, Robert Nothoff?
Good evening. My name is Robert Nothoff and I am the Policy Director at the LA County Federation of Labor, where we represent over three-hundred affiliates and over eight-hundred thousand proud working women and men across all industries, including the building trades. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed Community Workforce Development Agreement because rarely are we presented with a win-win-win option. And yes, I realize that I said three wins, and let me explain. Win number one, this is a win for students. This agreement includes student hire goals, priority access in the apprenticeship program, and a scholarship program for disadvantaged students, among other benefits to students in the district. Win number two, this is a win for Long Beach residents. This agreement would create pathways out of poverty for some of Long Beach's historically marginalized communities. Money from this agreement will be used to specifically identify, target, and hire construction apprentices from communities of color, communities with high rates of poverty and underemployment, and residents from other underserved communities here in Long Beach. And on average, on day one, when these apprentices began working, they averaged thirty dollars an hour. That's a twenty dollar an hour wage plus a ten dollar an hour benefit package, and that's on day one. Name any other program that does that. And on top of that, over ninety percent of apprentices are within the construction trades, and so when we add all this up together, that's a true pathway out of poverty, and that's what this is really about. That has a generational impact on scores of Long Beach families. And finally, win number three, this is a win for responsible government. This agreement will utilize a strong, highly-trained workforce, ensuring the project will be built right, be built on time, and built on budget. So as you can see, by passing this tonight, this is akin to the tide that lifts all boats. So it's a no-brainer, and the LA Fed is proud to stand in support of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. President Williams, board members, Superintendent Steinhauser, executive staff. Today I'd like to talk to you about the selection process for superintendent, but before I do, I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Teacher Association, specifically the Librarians' Task Force, and I'd like to update you on some positive things that have happened. At the last board meeting, we were pleased that the board awarded regular contracts to the five teacher librarians that had been working under special contracts. We meet yearly with Superintendent Steinhauser as part of the contract. This is one of the concerns that we have voiced to him, and we are very, very pleased that now we have colleagues that are permanent members of Long Beach Unified. The other thing that we brought up to Superintendent Steinhauser was the collection of library books, print collection, in our libraries with the average copyright date of nineteen-ninety-five. He was able to find monies this year to fund all elementary through high school libraries with a minimum of five thousand dollars, all the way up to twenty thousand. Your libraries are now going to be brought up to twenty-first century standards. I would now like to address our concerns regarding the selection criteria. We would like to see a national search done. Board Member Meyer, it's my former principal, and he expressed a negative experience with a previous superintendent. I well understand that. I was president of CSEA when the superintendent was over our district. One of his main goals was to eliminate school libraries. I was halfway through in my teacher librarian program at Cal State Long Beach, but because of courageous board members Harriet Williams, Bobby Smith, and Ed Evelyn, they spoke ferociously against that. A strong board took it off the table and other programs that superintendent was going to eliminate. We have faith in the elected board. We know you will do the correct thing for the students and staff and parents of Long Beach Unified. Open it up to a nationwide search. We think, not think, we know you will do the best for our students. Another thing that I would like for you to consider, to have an advisory committee composed of all stakeholders, including CSEA, Taub, and ALB. I would like to suggest also that you hold town hall meetings in each of your districts, maybe starting the meetings a little later, six or seven p.m. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. My name is Chris Calippe. I'm the Executive Director of the Teachers Association of Long Beach, and I wanted to, first, I want to say that it was wonderful that we had such an engaged and enthusiastic discussion at our last board meeting. I don't think I've ever seen you folks so animated. It was very interesting to see the in-depth conversation and that you really are thinking deeply about how to, how to look at your next superintendent. So speaking of that, what do we as a community want out of our next superintendent? For better or for worse, and depending on who you're asking, Mr. Steinhauser is a very hands-on superintendent. Ask him a question about any aspect of school, of the school district, and he'll have an answer. Now, I don't always agree with that answer, but nevertheless, he's a superintendent that is hands-on and that does not typically defer. That's in contrast to your run-of-the-mill superintendent, who are just the face of the organization, not a policy wonk or someone who completely understands the multifaceted dynamics of running a school district. Certainly, we need to have that discussion as to whether this is going to be an internal or external pick on the position, but a deeper dive should be taken on what do we want this next superintendent to do and the skill sets that we'd like them to have. You're getting a new superintendent, you're not getting a new Chris Steinhauser. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Honorable Mayor Robert Garcia?
Well, thank you, and I want to, of course, just thank you for giving me an opportunity to say a few words. First, thank you for leading the best public school system that we have in the state of California, and especially to our incredible superintendent and his amazing team. Thank you, Chris. I'm here, I know that you have a, and are discussing tonight, a very important item as it relates to a project labor agreement with our trades behind us, and I just wanted to share with all of you, one, thank you for your incredible work on this. I think you have all been working very hard with our partners in the trades, and it's really appreciated. Our school district is a leader when it comes to construction, and if you look across the city and beyond and at the district, very few organizations are building more than all of you, and I want to thank you for that boost to our economy. In twenty fifteen, the city adopted its first citywide project labor agreement, and it was a recognized model for the state of California. We're one of the first to have a citywide agreement, not project-specific. In twenty sixteen, our largest department, the Port of Long Beach, adopted a similar project labor agreement. Later in twenty sixteen, Long Beach City College adopted a project labor agreement for their bond construction program. And again, here we are today with the school district as well, and so it just gives me a lot of pride that you're all discussing this today and that the staff has worked so hard on this issue. And I just want to add, what I find really important about project labor agreements is, yes, they sometimes can, can be a little more complex and sometimes there are additional measures to meet, but you always get, in my opinion, better work. You get work that has been vetted, and most importantly, the men and women that are on those jobs are given the dignity of good pay, benefits, and the ability to take care of their families. And that is something that all of you, and certainly I, am very, very proud of, is that these projects help and support working families across Long Beach and across the region. And so I'm just here to thank you for, for tonight, for the work and for the discussion you have all ahead, and to support all of my brothers and sisters back here as well. So thank you very much for, for having me.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Steinhauser and honorable board members. My name is Glenn Perez Rodriguez, and I am a core member and leader at Californians for Justice, as well as a Lakewood High School student and instructional leadership team member, or I L T for short. This is my second year at Lakewood High, and the journey so far has been quite, has been quite, has been quite memorable, with many experiences and mistakes to learn from and build upon. I joined CFJ after meeting Jamila, who is a CFJ organizer. CFJ aligned with my values and that all people at CFJ give you a strong sense of family and closeness, and have given me many opportunities to develop and practice my skills as a leader. Working with the I L T gave me the opportunity to work with teachers and administrators to identify challenges in the school, establish goals, and create, and create collective solutions for the overall success of the school community. It was the first time at Lakewood that students were invited to participate alongside the adult team. This experience showed us that it is possible for teachers, administration, and students to work together to find solutions, but it starts by building trusting relationships with each other and realizing that we are on the same team, share a similar vision, but we just need to take the extra steps towards achieving our shared goals. Oftentimes, from a student's point of view, it seems that we have no say, and we don't have the power to change our schools for the better. However, I am now more understanding of what teachers go through, and hopefully, teachers are more understanding of what students go through and need. I believe this is a great example of how, of how decision-makers can come together with students and parents to make important decisions about their future. I am here today on behalf of myself and my fellow LBUSD students to ask that we get the opportunity to give meaningful input in the superintendent hiring process. For example, what is important for me to have any superintendent is that they are conscious and aware of the unique challenges that students face today. Times change, as do the needs of youth. Thus, it is important and crucial to have a superintendent who is responsive to the ever-changing social and educational climate. One way that CFJ leaders have done this in other California regions is students like me being a part of the hiring committee for the city superintendent. I look forward to making history with LBUSD and being part of the first group of students that are involved in this hiring process. I leave you with this: To me and my fellow students, the Long Beach way is when student voice is central and never astray. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Rodriguez, your words were well-spoken. We can see you really doing some dynamic things in the future. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I will not be as good as Glenn. Glenn is our pro, but you know, I'll add a little bit to what he said. My name is Norma Rodriguez. I'm the organizing director with Californians for Justice. Californians for Justice is a statewide grassroots organization. We work for racial justice by building the power of youth, youth of color, immigrants, low-income families, and LGBTQ communities. We are committed to elevating the voices of youth and empowering young people to create brighter, more just futures. Tonight I'm here to discuss the pending superintendent hire. We are fortunate to have had a longstanding superintendent in Mr. Steinhauser. His tenure has contributed to the success of LBUSD. Stability matters. Stability matters for building lasting relationships. Because of the strong and stable leadership of LBUSD over the years, community groups like CFJ have managed to develop meaningful relationships with the district and in the like CFJ have managed to develop meaningful relationships with the district and in the schools we work in. This relationship has been fruitful for both of us and allowed us to amplify youth voice and leadership in decision-making. Our equity design teamwork and student-led trainings are examples of these powerful collaborations. This superintendent search opens a continued opportunity to build and deepen the relationship between LBUSD and the community by bringing in youth voice to the process. At a time when we are seeing youth leaders rise up nationally and internationally on critical issues, and in a city where our black and brown youth are facing critical issues as well, we want to make sure that there is significant, meaningful input from students, particularly students of color, in the superintendent hiring process. We look hearing, we look forward to hearing from you on how you will meaningfully engage the community in this process. To close out, I'd like to remind us that how we get our best results is when we lead together. As a community, as young people, as parents, as school board members, as union members, we need to come together in order to make the best decision on this hire. As people have said before, right, this hire is more than just one moment in 2020. It's about making a decision on the leadership and direction of LBUSD for the next few decades. We've seen leaders who've stayed in this position for the long haul, and we want to be sure to choose someone now who will continue that legacy and be a great fit for our diverse schools and community over the next few decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Benia Jr.
Good evening, President, Board of Education members, superintendent, staff, and thank you for letting me have this moment, and as well as thank you to my brothers and sisters from CSEA, TALB, and the trades. I'd like to speak about, a little bit about change and leadership. Obviously, we just went through a major change last year, and the road was a little bumpy, but we've accomplished great strides along the way, and I'm proud of that. We can see that there's going to be change with our, our Board of Education members, and we're hoping for positive change there as well. And with the selection process of the superintendent, it, you know, I'm really hoping that the best candidates are going to be viewed and considered, maybe perhaps somebody with a Ph.D. in education with a broad experience, maybe politically savvy in Sacramento. But bringing it back to home, most of all, right here, somebody who understands the classified workers here in CSEA. And if, you know, I've, I've had time to speak with board members, I've had time to speak to superintendent, other community leaders, and if anybody has any problems understanding us, I'd be happy to sit down with them, too. Just wanted to say thank you again, and I really hope you look, look really hard for somebody who's going to work for all of us, for the whole pie, not, not just one person or another or CSEA, but all of us, so we can come together and unite and really do some, some more positive work that's been already done, but above and beyond that here in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benia.
Good morning, Board members and superintendent. My name is Nicholas Kabeza, and I'm here on behalf of your state Assembly Member, Patrick O'Donnell, in support of the Community Workforce Development Agreement. As Chair of the Assembly Education Committee and a teacher for over 20 years, Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell understands firsthand that the conditions of our schools affect student success. Agreements like the Community Workforce Development Agreement helps ensure projects are on time, under budget, and give back to the community through job training and enhanced educational facilities. This is a unique participation in that it will provide district students with priority access to internships and apprenticeships opportunities in the building trades industry while providing businesses with a skilled workforce that meets industry needs. Assembly Member O'Donnell would like to recognize the hard work of Dr. Juan Benitez during this process, and thank you for your commitment to provide the personal and academic, academic success of every student. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Nate White. I'm the owner of Passacag Plumbing located in Long Beach. We're a third-generation plumbing company, and I love the opportunity to work for the city. We've been a part of since 1956. Over 80% of our employees are part of Long Beach City and have come from there. And currently, we have three apprentices that are out of the school district that have gone through all the schools, where they're all thriving in the apprenticeship and, and love working as plumbers. They get livable benefits and wages and can be part of the city where they grew up. I hope you will support this Community Workforce Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Jeremy Diaz, and I'm the Business Manager for Plumbers Local 78, Los Angeles, and Long Beach. Obviously, we're in support of this monumentous agreement. The, I'm going to speak from the heart right here. Basically, when you see someone who comes from an economically depressed area and they're able to get into a program that they know will change their lives, is the most fulfilling thing that you can ever do. I know some of you guys are educators, and I'm sure my wife is an educator, too, and she tells me all the time that when you see someone get it and they're able to succeed and thrive at something, it's, it's something that, you know, tugs at the heartstrings. Like Nate said, we have a lot of apprentices that live in the city that would love to build in the city of Long Beach. I lived in the city of Long Beach, and I was also able to work on the expansion at Long Beach Memorial where my son was born. So there's nothing better than building something that will have a long-lasting impression on the community. So I appreciate you guys' support for this, and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Lilia Okampo. Lilia Okampo. Okay, we'll, we'll bring her back. We'll call her name again.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Otaniel Flores, y estoy aquí representando los Southwest Carpenters.
Do you want to interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
Can you go? I don't know.
I'll call you up right after this gentleman, Lilia. Sir? Yeah.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Otaniel Flores.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Otaniel Flores.
Y estoy aquí representando los Southwest Carpenters.
I'm here representing the Southwest Carpenters.
Okay. Queremos, queremos que pasen el Community Workforce Development Agreement.
We, we want the Community Workforce Agreement approved.
Yo soy un residente de Long Beach, y queremos trabajar aquí en Long Beach.
I am a resident of Long Beach, and we would like to work here in Long Beach.
Okay. Para estar más cerca de nuestros seres queridos.
This will allow us to be closer to our families.
Yo tengo dos hijos que van a las escuelas públicas aquí.
I have two children that attend the public schools here.
Y me gustaría pasar más tiempo con ellos. Muchas gracias, y que tengan buen día.
I would like to spend more time with them. Thank you very much, and have a good afternoon.
Lilia Okampo. She disappeared again. Lilia Okampo.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my opinion. My name is Lilia Okampo. I am a mother of two twins in fourth grade at Oropeza Elementary School. And I think our new superintendent should have a new, like, view to see things because on these technology, technology times that our kids are having challenges because they're exposed to, to the technology and know as much as the books and, and everything else, and they have challenges also. And at, at the playground with, there are, there are being like, not playing rough with other kids, and there are, they're, they're telling the people, they're voicing their concerns, and the way that does is being approached, I think you need to have a different view, to listen to those kids, and to help them to have a way of not only stand for themselves, because when they stand for themselves, then they become the new, like, harassers or, in other words, bullies. Yeah. So they need to be listened. The, the superintendent has to pay more close attention to the sites, to what's going on, to the challenges that the sites are facing, and really pay attention to those type of challenges, because the way they are addressed will see the results when the kids go to the middle school, high school, things start since elementary, since kindergarten. And if they're not, like, taking care of, they're gonna just escalate. And everything also in the academic, kids need, especially the ones that are between special education and the regular class, they need to be paid attention, and our superintendent has to take care of that, to make sure there is a connection and that there is enough communication between teachers and parents, and that the, the parents are listened also when they voice their concern about their kids, to have a more successful students and better school climate in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilia. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm here to talk about the CWD agreement. I myself am a product of Long Beach Unified School District. I attended Los Cerritos Elementary, Hughes Junior High, and Long Beach Poly. I have two daughters. They both go to, they started at Gompers. They're at Marshall and Milliken High School. This agreement would allow us workers to be closer to home and spend more time with our families. We can coach Little League games, we can be at ballet practice, and we can have more quality time with our families. The people behind me, these men and women, are an excellent workforce. They produce buildings that are innovative, beautiful in design, and they are highly trained, committed to excellence, and complete the jobs with integrity. We are the local employees that live in this area. We are vested in the local community, and we want the best for Long Beach Unified School District. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I'd like to thank you guys for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Roberto Ruiz. I'm born and raised here in Long Beach. I graduated from Cabrillo High School. I went to Long Beach City College. Through the building trades is where, I'm a Southwest, I'm from the Southwest Regional Council, Carpenters, and I actually would like to have an opportunity to build something from my hometown. I've never had the opportunity to do it. The closest has been LAX. So this Community Workforce Agreement would actually give me that opportunity to work close to home. So my, I'm actually expecting a child, and there will be going to Long Beach Unified School District, because I just purchased a home here in Long Beach, and it has to do to the fact that we have jobs, wages, and benefits. And through that, with this agreement, it would actually help, help my family grow here and stay a part of Long Beach. So I really appreciate if you guys take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Hey, my name is Frank Zambrano, and I represent the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Just here in L.A., you know, we, I represent 30, 35,000 carpenters, and, and 4,000 of them live right here in this community. As you can hear, some of the members that just came up, and some, you know, they're out here doing what it takes to do, to build America, and that's what we do, along with the building trades and all the different trades that are, that are behind me, here in support of this agreement. You know, but you're going to hear everybody coming out and, and talking about, you know, how well we do what we do, and we do it well. We have an apprenticeship program that, you know, four-year program, at least with the Carpenters Union, they come out and they're able to, to make a living wage. And the gentleman that just came up, he, he wants to make sure that he's able to stay here. You know, but I want to talk a little bit about the economy, what we got going on here, and something that just started in L.A. with the homeless, right? We have a problem, not just in L.A., we have a problem right here in, in Long Beach. You know, poverty hits in many different ways, but I'll tell you what, with this type of agreement and the work that this is going to develop, things that could, you know, subside with crime, that could stop a bullet, that could put people back into homes, get them off of the streets, and that's jobs. And this particular project, and this particular agreement, I should say, will do just that. And that's what I want you to think about in supporting, and hopefully, you can support this, this agreement and make sure that it continues to move forward, because, you know, with, without jobs, without good wages, and without good benefits, hey, where are we going to go? We're going to stay stagnant. We're going to stay in the same place. And we already know where we're at. So let's move forward. Let's continue to develop Long Beach, and let's build it strong. Thank you very much for your time.
Yesenia Reyes. Yesenia Reyes. Is she in the other room? Okay. We'll, we'll get her. We'll pull her. Giovanni and I just can't read the last name. Giovanni? No Giovanni? Okay. Go back to that one.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Andrew Mayorga. I'm a business agent with La Union Local 1309. We are the founders of your successful training apprenticeship recruitment program that we have in Long Beach Unified. And these young gentlemen are from our pre-apprenticeship program, graduates of Long Beach Jordan. We are here, I brought them here, I know I've been here in front of this board before to talk about our program, but it's a lot different now when you, you see your product, because this is your product. You guys allow this program in your district. So, again, it's the first of its kind, and agreements like this impact young men, and women for that matter, the girls couldn't come tonight, that live in Long Beach, and give them an opportunity to create a foundation for themselves, their future, their families, and make changes that they would never have an opportunity to do if people like you didn't support opportunities like you're going to do tonight by approving this agreement. That's all we have to say. Thank you so much.
We haven't taken the vote yet, have we? Okay, is Yesenia Reyes?
Hello. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. My name's Yesenia Reyes. I am-
I am a resident here in Long Beach, transplant here, this is home now for me, from Central Valley. I came here, I am a former educator here of Long Beach Unified School District. I guess this message is kind of for the students as well, mainly because these apprenticeship schools, these programs out here, that I had no idea are out here. I am a part of Local 433 Iron Workers. I am also in favor of the Community Workforce Agreement. I am two and a half years in, I'm a fifth period apprentice, and to say that these programs change your life, they really do. They teach you safety, they teach you how to build these buildings in excellent manner, and you're trained by journeymen ironworkers. Four-year apprenticeship, I know we have plumbers, we have electricians, we have all union members here saying that we live here, we wanna work for our city. This is also my first time working on building the Veterans Hospital out here on Seventh Street. And it's amazing, it's really amazing to see just these buildings go up in your backyard. So I approve of this agreement, and I hope you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Susan Garcia. Did we get Giovanni here? Okay.
How are you guys? My name's Giovanni Estrada, and I represent the 433 Iron Workers. And I'm pretty much born and raised here, went to high school, elementary, middle school here. I'm from Cabrillo High School, and I think I started high school the second year it opened. So there was a lot of construction going on. I got to see a good piece of it, and now from what I see, it's really changed. And it's, I hear there's a lot of opportunities over there. I heard the lady, what she was saying about the alumnis earlier, I think it's a great thing. And I have many nephews and cousins going to different high schools here in Long Beach, and I know they're in these programs, and having apprenticeship programs would be a good idea as well. And I had the pleasure of working at the Long Beach City Hall and the Port Building and the New Library, did that for about a year and a half. And I think just passing the CWA would be a good choice for many of us locals, the pride we carry here, just working in our own backyard and, you know, helping families out.
Thank you very much. Susan Garcia.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about the superintendent search that we're embarking on, and I just want to remind you that, one, as people have already said, it should be nationwide. Two, we should form an advisory committee comprised of stakeholders, so that they can provide input, and we work as a team, and we also look for the best individuals that are out there. And lastly, that we have town hall meetings, so that we can have a discussion that people can attend at 7:00 PM at night, preferably too early, at 5:00 PM is too early, and it's better to have it later. And thank you for your time, and TALB, of course, would like to be involved in that, and so would all other union members, because labor is very important, we work as a team. And Chris, I am so sad you're leaving, but thank you for what you've done for our district. And it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you much. Thank you. Steve Gertis. Steve Gertis.
Good evening, board members. My name is Steve Gertis, come to you tonight on behalf of over six thousand members of sheet metal workers, Local 105. And part of my job, I'm an organizer for our local, and part of my job is to come to these meetings and represent. And we come to these a lot of times, and usually I'll have a scripted little speech that I'll give, but tonight's a little different, because I'm a resident of Long Beach. I've been a resident of District Five for almost twenty-seven years now. I live right across the street from one of the schools. And as part of my job, we go onto job sites and do labor compliance. And sometimes, in previous years, we go onto these job sites, and it's a little scary sometimes, the safety is a little weird, some of the quality of the work is just not up to par. But that's all gonna change now. This workforce agreement that you've come up with, it sounds like a really good one, too. We deal with a lot of these different PLAs, and this looks like one of the sweetest ones that I've ever come across. I think you've done a really good job negotiating this, and we thank you for that. I never had the opportunity to work in Long Beach, even though I lived here for most of my career. But it's great to see the opportunity available for these young guys, young apprentices and young journeymen and women, and look forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Robert Diaz. Robert Diaz.
Hello, my name's Robert Diaz, and I'm a proud electrician with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I'm here with my wife Molly and my son Bronson. He's a fourth grader at Pritzk Elementary. I'm also a graduate of ABC's Electrical Apprenticeship Program. Upon that graduation, upon graduating that program, I was left to myself, I was left on my own, there was no safety net. I was left on my own to find my own employment, negotiate my own wages, pay for my own insurance, and deal with poor company policies. That's what led me to organize into the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I immediately took advantage of the Electrical Training Institute, where I've learned the skills that far exceeded what my apprenticeship gave me. Those skills led me to run, I'm currently building the PRE Administrative Building at the Port of Long Beach, and I'm the foreman on that job. It also gave me the wages that made owning a home here in Long Beach a reality, something that I never thought that I could reach. I have health insurance, where I no longer have to fear doctor visits, or dental visits, or medical bills for myself and my family. I have a retirement, where I know I could rest assure that when I grow old, the burden of that will not be left on my son. But I think most importantly is the brotherhood. These men and women that work beside me, it's not just a trade, it's not just a job, they truly are an extension of my family, and I truly call them a brother and a sister. And I hope the board makes the right decision on this agreement, as I wish that these young tradesmen choose the right choice and choose a union apprenticeship. Thank you.
Crystal Herrera. Crystal Herrera. We'll call her again. Keith Franklin. Keith Franklin. Martha Cota. Martha Cota. Can we check? Oh, Martha's here? Okay.
Buenas tardes, Superintendent, y todos los miembros del board. Mi nombre es Martha Cota de Latinos in Action.
Good afternoon, board members and superintendent. My name is Martha Cota from Latinos in Action.
Y antes que nada le quiero decir gracias por todos los años de trabajo, por todos los años de haber estado en este proceso, para que todos los estudiantes tengan equidad y justicia en la educación.
And first of all, I would like to say thank you, thank you for all these years, thank you for all the dedication to the students, so that they receive a quality education.
Ahora me preocupa quién va a ocupar esa silla. Ahora me preocupa quiénes van a entrevistar a esos candidatos.
Now I am concerned of who will be taking your seat. I am concerned about whom will be interviewing the candidates.
Y estoy aquí a nombre de todos los padres que no pudieron estar esta tarde, o que no pudieron estar en esta sala, para pedirle a todos ustedes que este proceso sea un proceso abierto, un proceso que la comunidad esté incluida para poder ser parte de esta elección.
And I'm here representing all the parents that were not able to attend today, or that were not able to come into this room. I am here to ask for an open process, and where you're including the community.
Y creo que algo muy importante podría ser buscar a alguien, a una compañía, a una corporación, que nos pudiera ayudar aquí a poder tener ese proceso y elegir al mejor, porque queremos que esa silla sea llenada con una persona que también busque la equidad y la justicia para todos los niños.
Okay, so something that I think is important would be to maybe hire a company or someone that could help us in this process of finding the new superintendent, someone that could help find a superintendent that helps with equity and justice for all students.
Así es que les dejo de tarea, quiero que usted también sea parte de esto, que busque, porque usted se va, que busque ese proceso abierto para la comunidad, donde esos foros nosotros tengamos la oportunidad de preguntarles a ellos realmente, y no importa si no es de Long Beach el candidato. Y claro, si fuera bilingue en español pues sería mejor, ¿verdad?
So I give you this homework. I would like you to be part of this process of searching for the new superintendent. I would like to have forums where we could ask questions, and it would be nice if the candidate spoke Spanish, and if it's okay if he or she is not from Long Beach.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Crystal Herrera.
Hello. My name's Crystal Herrera. I'm from IBW Local 11, and I'm here to speak in favor of the Community Work Source Agreement. If this goes through, it's gonna provide lots of jobs and work for Long Beach residents who are union workers like myself. I am a product of IBW's Union Apprenticeship Program, and after five years, not only did I come out on the other side a state-certified electrician, but I was given amazing benefits, access to a free education, and I was taught a skill. And it's what I use to provide for my family. And in today's society, when women are grossly underpaid compared to our male counterparts, I make dollar for dollar, cent for cent, the same as every man that I work shoulder-to-shoulder with. And so in closing, as a Long Beach resident, and as a parent of a little girl that goes to Biggsville Elementary, I hope that you guys vote this through and afford me the opportunity to build a Long Beach that I can continue to be proud of. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Keith Franklin.
Hi, how you doing, Mr. Meyer? Good to see you. I was born and raised in Long Beach. I attended Hughes Middle School, and went to Wilson High School, graduated from there. I joined the military after that, when I came home. I served in the military for three years active and five years inactive, so a total of eight years. When I came home, I was looking for a job, and couldn't find one. But always wanted to be a union electrician, and Local 11, they provided a great opportunity for a career for me. So joined their apprenticeship program, and they allowed me to change my life, and I'm happy for that. Being in Long Beach resident, I live in Long Beach, I've only had an opportunity once to work on a Long Beach project, I would like many more, so if you would pass this, it would provide opportunities for local residents to, you know, work in their own community, and like the gentleman said before, making homeownership in Long Beach a reality. So I just wanna thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, I wanna thank Local 11 for giving me an opportunity. We have a great apprenticeship program, and if you pass the major, you'll have A1 quality work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks to all the folks who got up and spoke tonight, really appreciated the information that you wanted to share with us. Moving on with the agenda, we are now at staff report. There's none. Public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. I do have some folks who are going to comment. Chris Calapi.
Good evening. I'm the executive director of the Teachers Association of Long Beach, and I'm speaking on this specific issue for a proposal that the district sunshine last year for modifying kindergarten. Last Wednesday, we had a kindergarten forum that was widely attended by many teachers, filled with executive staff, including Superintendent Steinhauser and Deputy Superintendent Jill Baker. Lively discussion. The concern the association has is right now, we've already started with our kindergarten festivals, and we have our education celebration this Saturday. And not really knowing what we are going to agree on in this process in discussing kindergarten, it might behoove us to delay this implementation into the school year 21, '22, so we can spend this next year federing out any concerns that we have with the program, how this is gonna look universally throughout the school district, and get more input on whether or not kindergarten, a longer day for kindergarten, is good for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Carol Schultz. Carol Schultz. Okay, we'll come back to her. Kevin Quinn.
Hi, Kevin Quinn, Los Cerritos Elementary. I'm here today because I'm concerned about implicit gender bias in LBUSD. I know I'm an LBUSD teacher, but I'm also the parent of two girls, one a freshman at Poly, and the other a fifth grader in the dual immersion program at Henry. At issue specifically are the gross inequalities between the girls and the boys cross-country program at Poly. Now, I as a teacher recognize the challenges, how challenging it could be to balance the needs of all students, considering the vast diversity of culture, socio-emotional, as well as gender and self-identification that our community supports. The question I ask today is how we, as a district, are going to address the ongoing struggle to provide equal access. Now, regarding the inevitable matters of perceived discrimination, LBUSD has taken two approaches, which I'll refer to as the high road and the low road. The low road is the path of least resistance, it's a passive acceptance of its discriminatory practices, because they are often the result of implicit biases, which are extremely difficult to identify, let alone to eradicate. Now, the board and executive staff are to be commended on your handling of complaints. You, as a body, have been very adept at employing the vast resources of the district, including closed-session meetings, lawyers, settlements, and our fantastic PR department to mitigate the tarnishing of our district's reputation. But I know that we are better than this, because LBUSD also has a track record of taking the high road. Now, the high road, as I see it, is when we proactively address very challenging areas, not because they are easy, but because it's the right thing to do. A great example of this commitment is how we train our teachers to recognize and resist practices engendered by implicit racial bias. This training offers examples of some of the unfortunate symptoms and manifestations of racial bias, even in the best-intended practices. This is important, because the focus is not on blaming, shaming, or persecuting, which inevitably creates defensive and counterproductive responses. Rather, the intent is to create an equitable environment where everyone can become more tolerant and supportive. In the training, we as teachers and support staff are given the tools to recognize and discuss inequalities, as well as the time to collaborate on ways to implement practices and procedures that actively promote a non-discriminatory culture. This is the high road that I'm confident will continue to reduce instances of biases, inequalities, and complaints of discrimination. What I'm proposing today is that this body consider a proactive commitment to gender equality, that explicitly trains teachers, administration, and support staff in ways to recognize and counteract discrimination engendered by implicit gender bias. Our students and staff should not have to navigate ambiguous expectations that leave all of us vulnerable to either perpetrating or to suffering from the unintended consequences of implicit gender bias. Further, our parents... gender bias. Further, our parents are neither equipped nor should they be burdened with the task of trying to identify, to expose, or to root out injustices with LBUSD. Let's take the high road. Thank you very much.
Carol Schultz.
Hello. Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Carol Schultz and I have worked for the district for 17 years. I started my career as an instructional aid special and 12 years ago, I earned a promotion to Behavior Intervention Assistant, a position that is no longer available through the district. I've spent my entire career in the Special Education Department, helping provide the best care to our ever-growing special education population. And at last count, we have 10,414 enrolled in our program. I attended the November 20th, 2019 BOE meeting and pleaded with the board not to approve the new contract because of how it would negatively affect over 500 employees. The new contract would give 2,500 classified employees a long overdue raise and the... but would also at the same time create a huge financial burden for over 500 employees. The 500 employees would see a change to their original compensation package, which included salary and health benefits when they were originally hired some 15, 20, 30 years ago. We have been here for a very long time. And what we'd like to know is what the reason is. The... we were with you during the 2007 crisis, when we had to lay off teachers, our pay raises were frozen. We were with you through all of that. Now the district is in a great financial position, but it seems like these 500 employees are being targeted because the BIAs are no longer being hired through the district. It's being outsourced through other companies who don't provide the same type of service that we provide, the really good care and everything. Their employees or their companies are telling them to stand back and don't do some of these things. We used to have great training, once a month. For years now, we haven't seen any of that. We feel like we are totally unsupported and just out there. And who is suffering? Our special education children, all 10,414 of them. And we'd like to know why. Why are we not getting the support that we used to? We feel like we're second-class citizens. We've got the teachers up here and the classified down here. And it's not fair and we'd like to know why. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Garcia.
Good evening. Susan Garcia, Colompell Academy, and I am a science teacher. I teach seventh and eighth grade science and I also teach seventh grade health. And I'm here before you to discuss an issue near and dear to my heart, and it's redundant. I came here in 2017. I also came in August of 2018 to discuss this. And now I'm back on January of 2020. We started a new decade and it's time for change. And it is obviously, seventh grade science in Long Beach Unified is not a full year. We are not teaching the curriculum as we are supposed to. Only 50% of the content of the next-generation science standards are being covered. And the way the California Science Test is created, it covers content from, which is integrated content by the way, from sixth grade to eighth grade. And at this point, we are not covering that fully for seventh grade. So our students are going to be hampered when it comes to a CAS test because 50% of the instruction is not covered. And in addition to that, the CAS test, which is the California Science Test, is part of our schools' dashboards. This is something we need to be cognizant of and need to change because this is a century where we're having to work on technology. And you cannot have steam without science and we need to get this changed. So my question's to you. Why are we not fully serving our seventh-grade students? Can we readjust our fiscal priorities so that we can fund seventh grade for a full year and still meet our health requirements? And I'm not talking about having PE teachers teach health. I'm talking about having separate health classes. And I'm also talking about having a full year of science. Let's not cheat our children out of a future. Science is critical to the understanding of this earth and I thank you for your time. And I apologize for being always talking about something if I bugged you in the ear on this in the past. And if I haven't, shame on me because I haven't done my job yet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now at business items. Personnel report, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the Superintendent. Appointment 62, leaves of absence six, abandonment of position one, resignations 18, retirements five, amendments one, recissions one. Certificated personnel appointments 18, in-service changes 19, separations deceased one, resignations one, retirements two, and I move approval.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Board authorizations?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion's approved unanimously. Instruction?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The motion's approved unanimously. Finance report A.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance report B.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, recuse myself from recitation of the finance report B on the consent calendar of potential financial interest under government code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a set of contractors who has done work with PDEs.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The motion's approved four to zero with one recusal. Business report, department report?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion's approved unanimously. Purchasing and contracts report?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion's approved unanimously. We are now at superintendent items. Students readmits?
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board, I'm pleased to recommend the remission of two students. The first student is student 447 and the second student is 173 and they would be assigned to schools within the school district.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously.
Next, we have the Williams Quarterly Report. We do this four times a year. It's an information item and I'm pleased to announce that there were no complaints in any item, in any area, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We're now at new business, Community Workforce Development Agreement. And Alan, is Alan here?
Yeah, he was, yes.
Okay, just... You just want to review that with us very quickly, Alan?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. So, Mr. President, board members, staff, we're very encouraged. We're very happy to be able to bring to you today a Community Workforce Development Agreement. We've... this has been a, this has been a long road that we've been through, as we've discussed, the options that are available to the board. And the board's given us clear instructions as we move forward to what to work on. And we established some pretty tough goals. And I want to take a minute and thank Chris Hana for working with us, collaborating with us through a lot of, through a lot of long, long discussions and process. Sometimes robust conversations, I will say, as we've been able to work towards what I feel is a very good agreement that has students at its very heart, as we look to the work that we do and the benefit that we can create. As you can see in the room behind me, I also want to take a moment and thank our union partners and our friends. These are, these are folks that, that took time out of their life to come here and talk about the support of this program. Mind you, these are folks that are probably up at 4:00 in the morning. And so now they're taking time out of their, out of their night to be here today to talk about the passion that this program brings to us. So I'm very happy to be presenting that to you. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a past International Association of Sheep Metal Workers 108. Yes, I am that old, 108. So proud to bring this to you and the great benefits it will bring to the, to the students in the district as we move forward with our bond program. So I'm available for questions.
I move approval.
A second. Discussion.
Oh, okay. It is very seldom that we see this type of support for an issue that is brought to us to vote on, that we have the support in this room, in the overflow room. The mayor came and spoke in favor of, of this issue. To hear all of the heartfelt comments about how having a well-paying job where you can provide for your family, where you can be a homeowner, where you can have health insurance, to hear that over and over again and to have people who live in Long Beach, who grew up in Long Beach, who are raising their children in Long Beach, that feels good to be on this end of it, to know that there has been so much work done to bring this forward. So I thank everybody who made that possible. And also, I think it's interesting to note, not one person spoke against it, not one person. So that tells me a lot about what's going on.
I too would like to thank the workers who have already put in a long day to be here tonight. It's particularly gratifying when Mr. Franklin, one of my former students, stands up and articulates his position to support of the union so well. So thanks for being here, one and all.
So I want to extend my appreciation to my fellow board members here for voting to extend time and providing an opportunity for everyone that came out today to get a chance to speak their opinions on, I think, two both important but historic items that we have on our agenda here. One of my priorities when I got sworn in was around college and career readiness for our students. And I think this Community Workforce Development Agreement upholds our commitment. Particularly, I want to speak to the two-thirds, not exclusively, but highlighting the two-thirds of our students and their families that are on free and reduced lunch, right, in particular, right? That's 66% approximately of our students. And that is based on income, right? So someone mentioned it here earlier, this is a triple win, right? A win for students, a win for our working families, and a win for our communities here in Long Beach. So I want to thank everyone for coming out. I want to thank all the work on your end and our district staff and our labor partners for the effort in putting this agreement together. And I want to, I want to stress something. It's warm in this room. It probably hasn't been this warm since the summer, right? So it's a combination of bodies, but also the good energy that we feel up here. So if I'm sweating or I got my, my collar a little wet right now, it's a good thing, right? To have you all come out. I want to thank the folks that are in our overflow room as well for coming out and really engaging with our district and engaging your board. But I really can't wait to begin to tell stories of thousands of students that will graduate from one of our schools, gain an apprenticeship, and some high-level 21st-century skills, come back, and then as many of our labor partners here work at a school in our district, buy a home in our district, potentially raise a family in our district, and spend their money in our local area, in our city, in our service area. That's what our district is about. So for me, it's a very proud moment. I also come from a working family, local ironworkers in San Diego. So it seems like I've come full circle here with the priority to uphold our commitment to college and career readiness. It's a unique agreement and it puts students and communities first, right? And so that's why I also was encouraging, encouraging us to use this language of Community Workforce Development Agreement because it really does uphold college and career readiness. And those are not two mutually exclusive things, right? The skills that we need in our 21st-century economy, problem solving, teamwork, critical thinking, those are skills that we can apply day one, right? If we hit the ground running, get the proper training, the proper mentoring. And those are skills that you would be successful in, in college and/or in a career, or both simultaneously, right? So I really want to highlight that. I do have a few questions, Alan, if you could help me find these in this very robust document. So do you want me to list them, Alan, or should we go one by one?
However you'd like to address them.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just throw them out, all right? So I want to be clear here what we mean by local. And we have two tiers according to our agreement. The first tier being our, our district's service area. But I don't see like Long Beach zip codes outlined, Alan. Is that just implicit in saying we're, we're servicing Long Beach?
No, the, the zip codes, the, the zip codes that we included in the agreement, we specifically made the attempt to really look at those, those areas that we cover in our district, those, those communities that our families come from. So now, now this, this actually extends a little, even beyond our borders as we look at how we bring, we have children that come from some of our neighboring cities that come to our district. So we very specifically looked to do that to model and mirror directly off of the local workforce plan that the board had adopted back in April of 2018. So those zip codes are included in here. They are, they are, I believe that they're on Attachment B is where they start, which is page 36 of your document.
Yeah, so I do see zip codes from the cities, again, in our immediate surroundings, but I don't see any Long Beach zip codes. And I, and I see the reference to B and the list, but I don't see specific Long Beach zip codes. Am I missing something?
I believe that what you've found here is, is a typographical error. They obviously would need to be there.
Right.
Yeah, our, our 908 district zip codes are, are included here. It is. So I do apologize for that and I, I, you know, it seems like it's one of those things, no matter how many eyeballs look at this, that there's, there's an opportunity for missing something. But thank you very much there. I... It is, it is, we will resolve that. But yes, all of the zip codes that actually compromise the cities of Long Beach, Avalon, Lakewood, and Signal Hill are also included in this agreement too. So thank you very much for catching that.
Yes.
Chris's.
Chris Hana.
In Article 3.5, Article 3, Section 3.5i, the first tier is included, the first tier of local residents residing in the first tier zip codes, which covers the district service area and the surrounding communities. Those zip codes listed in the back are the surrounding communities and then all of the district service zip codes.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure since I didn't see them in here. I wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly, and indeed I was. So just, I want to make sure that we include.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Yeah, clearly, clearly we meant to, to capture our own zip codes.
Section 2.2, Alan, specifically identifying the projects. So I know that in December, when you gave your PowerPoint presentation, that you gave us two scenarios, projects above 10 million, projects above 20 million. I know that this time around for this agreement, we have the projects listed. Can you give us a sense, ballpark of what we're talking about in terms of the dollar amount for these projects, Alan?
Yes, the, the total dollar amount of projects is, and I don't have the exact number for it, but somewhere around $350 million of projects, I believe. I'll look over, phone a friend, a little bit over 400 million, excuse me. I'm, I'm looking at our, our Executive Director of Facilities. But about $400 million of projects is what those compromise.
And that's over the first five-year pilot?
Yes, yes.
So let's, let me hear that again, Alan. What are we talking about here in terms of projects and money going toward working families on these projects?
We're looking at about $400 million of construction dollars. Those are real, actual hard dollars, we, we call it in the industry, but those are hard construction dollars that are, that are compromised as part of this agreement. Over a period of five years, as we look to establish the processes and, and metrics to ensure that we're being successful... we look to establish the processes and metrics to ensure that we're being successful with this agreement.
Awesome. Moving right along, Alan, I appreciate that we are unique, and I, you know, I want to say that we're probably one of the first, if not the first, district that explicitly includes students in this project labor agreement, Community Workforce Development Agreement. And our goal is forty percent for the local hire component. And I know that we have specific language for disadvantaged students. I'm wondering if I missed, do we have any specific language for disadvantaged workers in that local hire? Meaning, I think Metro's definition for disadvantaged workers is low-income workers and other at-risk workers. Did we include any language for disadvantaged workers?
If language for disadvantaged were special programs that would pertain to workers of a certain economic standpoint, I do not believe. We focused mainly on the opportunity for students to be able to enter into apprentice opportunities. So we've established, as we work with our local partners and we work with our local trades partners, the ability to bring resources forward so that no student has an economic hurdle to be able to get into the union and be able to partake in the training and the jobs that come from that. When we talk about disadvantaged worker, I'm not sure what opportunities you were referring to there that we might have for them.
So low-income folks that are looking for jobs in Long Beach that might not necessarily be students in our district right now, but might have graduated from one of our schools that are in Long Beach?
Yeah, we very much talked about, and we have in our agreement, the, we're looking at the metrics of how many of our Long Beach graduates are part of the program. So those are some metrics that we are going to be, we are going to be tracking so that we can provide opportunities for those students that have graduated from our programs and may now become or be already journey level. They've went through the program and they're already working journey level, some of the folks that you heard tonight. So those folks, we're going to be tracking as well during this program to be able to show to the board how many of our local individuals that have been through our school system are being positively impacted by this program.
This is awesome. I have chills. Thank you for putting this together. Thank you to our labor partners. I look forward to this pilot phase, and I would urge us to consider adding some language, since this is a pilot phase, around including, let's say, like a ten percent disadvantaged worker, given that we have this forty percent goal for the local hire. So I'm one hundred percent supportive of this. I urge my fellow board members to vote yes for this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, thank you to your staff who have worked diligently with our partners in the building trades for years to make this happen tonight. We know this has been a really long process, and we know that our responsibility as school trustees is to keep what's in the best interest of students at heart of the decision that we made. And we knew that as we move forward in this process that we had to be focused in that space. And I'm so thrilled that this comes to us tonight with such an intensive student focus. I do want to give a shout out to Josh LaFarga in the back from laborers, because the STAR Program started four and a half, almost five years ago at Jordan High School, and it was one of our first partnerships to really look at how we can incorporate students into the work and give them a taste of the work and how this could work for Long Beach, who had not considered a program like this before. So I think those baby steps at the STAR Program years ago at Jordan High School and to have some of our alums standing here tonight to speak in favor was a really important symbol that that path that we started several years ago has led us to tonight. And I am grateful for all the work that's been put in with our labor brothers and sisters as well as the staff who've made this happen. I appreciate pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine, Article fifteen, the work opportunities for programs for local residents, the apprenticeship pathways for our current students, a full-time pre-apprenticeship internship coordinator, so that students who are interested in this have a person, a face, a name, that they will be able to interact face-to-face, being funded by the building trades. I think that is one of the most unique pieces of this, as well as a scholarship, making sure that those barriers that we don't necessarily think of, those small fees that might be hard for some of our students to make up for, that there is consideration for that. To all of you who came out, almost thirty of you by my count, to speak to us tonight, to the parents of current students, to the alumni of our schools, we're so grateful for your voice in this room. It makes what's on this page real and palpable for people who may be grappling with what does this mean and not understanding it. So thank you for taking the time out of your very busy day to be here to support this work. I am so, and I was marking off of all of the folks in the room, we had electricians and ironworkers, laborers, district council laborers, pipe trades, sheet metal, Teamsters, the LA Fed is here representing the umbrella, as well as LAOC Building Trades and all of those folks. So thanks for being in the room. Thank you for hanging in with us in this partnership and making really this model agreement happen tonight, and I look forward to this being a model for other districts to look at as a way forward.
You know, a few years ago, if you can recall, Alan and Chris, we started down the path of looking at ways to get our local community folks involved in some of our contract work here in the district, which came in the form of the local hiring process that we finally approved, and that process I consider to be the forerunner for where we are tonight. That involved a lot of intense time and energy to put that together and advocacy to make that, put that program in place. So I see a lot of what we did back then as contained in the agreement tonight. The support of local people in the community, also getting minority businesses involved in the contract work in this district. And we began to see the numbers begin to increase for our residents and our businesses as a result of that agreement. So I'm very pleased to see this extended now to the agreement that we're in. Years ago, I served as dean of trades at Long Beach City College that included all of the trades, plumbing, aircraft maintenance and repair, sheet metal work, so forth and so on. I also served as a member of UAW years ago, McDonnell Aircraft Company. And I did a lot of work with Josh LaFarga on making sure that we got students at Jordan High School involved in being able to get into apprentice program. So what I'm hearing tonight is very encouraging, the next step that we're moving on is bringing a lot of this together. Of course, the rationale back then was if we had so much poverty in certain parts of our district, that means we had a lot of our students who were attending our schools and in the classroom, who were impacted by the poverty to such an extent that they would have difficulty in the classroom. And so in putting together the local hiring agreement, that was all about being able to address some of those issues. So I'm so pleased tonight to see that we've come all the way around and made this a model program that can really extend on all of that, and very grateful for it. So now let's move to ratify this, folks. Need a motion?
We're already in discussion.
Motion second.
We didn't do a motion.
Yeah, we did.
I didn't hear them. Okay, did we do a second? Okay. I know there's been a lot of discussion already, so let's, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously.
Mr. President, if I may, I just want to take a minute to thank some people. You, as a governing body, set some very high standards in this process, and I want to thank you, me, Alan, and Chris, because you guys did a great job. And we're visited by dozens of districts across the nation, and this will be another example of the fine work that's out there. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, let's moving on. Moving right along, Resolution zero-one-two-two-two-zero-dash-A, Annual and Five-Year Reportable Fees Report for FY 2018-19. Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Selection of new superintendent of schools, and let me call on Ruth Ashley.
Yes, Mrs. Ashley.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. Before we dive into this, I just want to really thank you for this opportunity for me to be a part of this process. It truly is an honor, and I'm grateful for the trust that you have in me. I'm also grateful to the speakers tonight who let their voices be heard. I'm also grateful for them. So in front of you, you will soon have the handouts that Letitia's passing out. There are two of them. One is a copy of the slide deck presentation, and that is going to be available to everyone online, but for the audience, if you would just focus on the monitors there, that would be great. The second handout you have are the standards from the California School Boards Association. These are the superintendent governance standards, and I would just like to read a few of these because it will serve as a backdrop to your conversation and decision-making tonight. So I'm just going to read, like I said, a few of them. It's a whole page, but there are certain phrases here in standards that stand out more than the others. So first of all, the superintendent promotes the success of all students and supports the efforts of the Board of Trustees to keep the district focused on learning and achievement. The superintendent recognizes and respects the differences of perspective and style on the board and among staff, students, parents, and the community, and ensures that the diverse range of views inform board decisions. The superintendent acts with dignity, treats everyone with civility and respect, and understands the implications of demeanor and behavior. The superintendent serves as a model for the value of lifelong learning. The superintendent works with the board as a governance team and assures collective responsibility for building a unity of purpose, communicating a common vision, and creating a positive organizational culture. Moving down the page, the superintendent communicates openly with trust and integrity and accepts leadership responsibility and accountability for implementing the vision, goals, and policies of the district. So thank you for keeping those things in mind as we move forward. So as we continue on from our conversation, from your conversation that you had last board meeting on January eighth, there are some decisions that are to be made that fall into six buckets. The first bucket is the biggest bucket, and that's whether or not you will have an internal versus external candidate search. Secondly, you'll approve the timeline that's given, but also then decide on the recruitment strategy because that will affect the timeline. Fourth, we have the public outreach efforts to be decided upon, as well as a recommendation for an advisory committee if you go that route. Then lastly, the public disclosure of finalists and its implications. So during the January eighth board meeting, there was strong support for only looking within the district for candidates. However, a nationwide search was suggested and the topic was explored. So as you make this decision, our recommendation, and Chris and I will toggle back and forth, if an external search for candidates is to be conducted, the search should be limited to California candidates only.
And I'll add to why that recommendation would be there. So we have over eleven hundred districts in California with another thousand charter schools, so that you have a huge body of candidates. But the bigger issue is that California school finance is very unique and different than any other state in the nation. No other state operates a local-controlled funding formula like we do. And another big piece that is really important for superintendents is the issue of collective bargaining. So in many states where you might get some candidates, potentially, could be from states such as Texas, Florida, North Carolina, and so on, where are, these are all right-to-work states. So right-to-work is very different than collective bargaining in states like New York or California. So, and in many of those states, they, those boards who are right-to-work have the authority to raise taxes at your level, so because they, which you really cannot do here. The only way that you can raise revenue for general fund is a parcel tax, and we know those are very difficult in school systems like Long Beach that have high levels of poverty. In California, parcel taxes are usually only approved, for the most part, not a hundred percent, but for the most part, in what we call basic aid districts. So for example, Newport, you know, Piedmont, you know, systems like that. So if you are going for the external search, we would recommend that you limit it to California. Did you want to go through the whole process, and we can do that, and come back? So Ruth, go ahead and do the next part.
Okay, sure. So number two and number three go together. The timeline, first starting tomorrow, you've identified the process. So the public engagement and recruitment efforts will go from January twenty-seventh to March sixth, so that's more than a month. The application and screening and initial interviews, March ninth through April third, and then from April sixth to May first, the interview process will continue. So I envision having three rounds of interviews, with the final round being with the five of you. May sixth or May twentieth, the board appoints new superintendent. Ideally, it would be on May sixth, but we do have that May twentieth board meeting. The recruitment strategy will impact the timeline. So if you go with an outside recruitment agency, it will back up the timeline by up to four weeks at the most. I've had communications with at least four different agencies. The request for proposals, they did agree that it would delay the process, but the cost estimates varied between fifty thousand and seventy-five thousand dollars. Since we are a large district, it would more than likely be on the higher end. The folks that I had talked to, they all said that our staff would assist them with the public engagement, since we know our people, we know our schools. They would rely on staff as well. So with that being said, the recommendation would be to have an internal recruitment effort to be managed by me.
And I'm going to just jump in here because as a soon-to-be-retired superintendent, this is a job that many of my former colleagues do, okay? And the issue is that they rely heavily on the staff of the school system to do the work. So they would actually do the paper screening and work with the board and that type of thing. They would actually be at the public engagements. Having said that, I feel strongly, based on the comments that have been said at the last two board meetings, that Mrs. Ashley is well-equipped with her expertise to lead this work. She would need a budget, which is not a problem, to do, and I think would do an admirable job in doing that, so. Next, we can go to the public outreach.
So we've talked, or you've heard about the town halls from our speakers tonight, and you've also had the conversation. So we would recommend having one meeting in each Board of Education trustee area. Translations would be available at all community meetings. There's also the discussion about deploying an electronic survey, and we would make available the thought exchange. It's a survey that's currently being used for the LCAP, and so that would be made available as well.
Mrs. Ashley, before you go on, on the thought exchange, we have asked them to set up a pilot account so you could interact with it, so you understand exactly how it works. Actually, it's going to be deployed this week with our parents and employees on the LCAP, so, but you would be able to see firsthand what this process would be.
There's also the opportunity to engage district and community stakeholder groups, and we've gone ahead and identified those groups here. So our district community advisory committee, the district English learner advisory committee, Californians for Justice who spoke this evening, Coalition of Involved African-American Parents, the Kamai Parents Association, Long Beach Council PTA, our NAACP, our Pacific Islanders Education Voyage, our superintendents. our Pacific Islanders Education Voyage, our Superintendent's Student Advisory Group will be meeting next week. Our Superintendent's Forum will also be meeting next month. And then the LGBTQ Center, also known as the Center.
And before you go on, Mrs. Ashley, obviously, we looked at the major stakeholder groups in the district. If the board adopts these processes, anyone obviously could go to any of these and go to multiple ones. To be very honest with you, they would all be published ahead of time. And, and they would be held at a time, for example, the town hall meetings would be held in the evening, and it suggested they would be held at a time which would be convenient for all folks. And if we structured those the right way, by that I mean not on the same night, we could livestream them at the same time. So the other part is on the District Advisor Committee and these meetings, these would be held at the times that these groups meet. So for example, we get over 100 parents that go to the District Advisor Committee. And I see a group that we left off, my fault, Mrs. Ashley, the CAC needs to be there. So the, so we would hold these within those groups. So for example, we were all at the CAC meeting at the last time, and you had about 120, 130 parents.
It's there, Mr. Superintendent.
Is it there?
First poll point.
No, no.
That's DCA.
Yeah, DCA.
Yeah, so that's my fault, that's, that's new thing. But again, this is a fluid, but anybody, these would all be published for anybody to come to, but they would be held at the appropriate time of the appropriate group. So we wouldn't ask them to change their time. But with the difference of your Board of Trustee area meetings would be held in the evening around 7:00, 6:30, whichever most convenient for the parents. So we can go on to number five, the topic of the advisory committee.
So if you decide to have an advisory committee, we'd just like to define the purpose, and that is to represent various stakeholder groups and serve as a confidential arm of the Board of Education and Human Resource Services during this selection process. So this committee will give feedback and recommendations only to the Board of Education. Its function is that it falls under the Brown Act, allowing members of the community to see the posted agenda with this, with 72 hours of the meeting, and an opportunity to address the advisory committee in an open session. And then the advisory committee will then commence in close session. Advisory committee meetings will be held, first of all, to review the roles and responsibilities, review applications, and conduct preliminary interviews. They will more than likely be all-day meetings, and there will be plenty of them.
And before you go on, again, my fault, the CAC would be a recommended representative on this group. So I would put CAC-1, and Mrs. Ashley will say what that means, so.
Yes.
Also, I didn't see Album as part of the advisory committee.
That should be on there, too.
Oh, yes.
Just like Alan said, many eyes look at this, and it's a work in progress.
It is. Thank you for that. So the next slide lists advisory committee members. So obviously, it's not restricted to those listed, since we have a couple of missing here. But many of those who we would engage with, you'll see them listed again on the advisory committee members. Those who are not mentioned before, we have the Assistance League. Of course, we would have two members of the Board of Education to be decided upon at a different time. We have CCEJ, a representative from Cal State Long Beach. We have CFJ, two representatives from CSJA. And these are in alphabetical order, so there's no strategy here for importance. We have CIAAP with one member, DCA one member, DLAC one member. Executive staff, we had, we would have two members, the Kamai Parents Association, one member. PTA, one member, NAACP, one member. Pacific Islander Group, one member. TALB would have two representatives, and the Center would have one member.
Ruth, I don't see Long Beach City College on here, would we want them?
So we only put one of the Long Beach College Promise Partners, and that was...
You could represent all of them.
Correct, with all of our partners. And the, and the reason being, this is already a committee of about 25. And in my past experience on selection process as a trustee for the chancellor's office, that's about as large as you want. You don't want it to be too much bigger. But Album would have two, and CAC would have one.
Okay, moving forward, the last decision to be made is the public disclosure of finalists. So before, it was mentioned that the top three to five finalists will publicly interview before the Board of Education during a regularly scheduled or special board meeting. Our recommendation is that we not move forward with that because public interviews may decrease the likelihood for qualified candidates internally and/or externally. It may decrease that likelihood for them to apply. We would have to let them know ahead of time if they were to be made public.
Ruth, maybe I missed it, but I think that no, public interviews may decrease the likelihood for qualified candidates would mean that all applicants' names would be kept confidential.
That is correct.
Good. Thank you, Ruth. Okay, let's open it up for discussion as we try to move forward with finalizing the process that we choose to, to implement. Ruth has done an excellent job of providing us with an overview of the process, the superintendent selection process. And we want to hear from my, my fellow board members about where you stand on this process.
So should we go, should we go one by one, just process-wise?
Let's go, we can go one, we can go one by one.
I have a, just a quick question before we start. Will this information be available to the public on how we're doing things?
Yes, so what we'll do is if you make a decision tonight on the process, we can actually post this one, and if there are any modifications to this, we would post the adopted one that you would have, so, so that people can see that.
Okay, ready?
Ready.
Point one, internal versus external candidates, the recruitment process itself. Let's start with Diana.
Well, I believe it should be external. After hearing the information about maybe keeping the search within the state of California for different reasons, including the California, the unique school finance for the state of California, and other issues, I think we open it up to the state of California and have a search throughout the state.
Thank you, Diane. Mr. Meyer?
Well, I agree also with external candidates, but of course, internal as well. So it would be internal plus external. I'm not so certain about limiting just California applicants, but I sure respect the viewpoint of our superintendent. Seems like the committees, as they form, would be able to discern if there's one from a state who's vastly opposed to labor agreements, that he or she would be disqualified. So I'm only, that's the only question I have.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Dr. Bedidas?
Yes, I want to preface my comments on the internal, external candidate with, with sort of a blanket statement that I would apply to all six, actually, five, is it five areas?
Or six areas, I guess.
Six areas. And I think for me, I, I use the moniker at our last board meeting of how we uphold all means all. And to me, the way that institutions, and particularly educational institutions, uphold the commitment to community engagement, to equity, to access, to diversity, is through our policies and our practices. And it's not just sometimes because it's faster, or sometimes because it's cheaper. It's all the time, right? The way we reflect and uphold our commitments to issues and values that we deem as priorities and are important is through policy. So I think the process that we're going to use for arguably the most important decision that this board will make needs to uphold those values, both for the practical way that we uphold and reflect values, but also through the community engagement itself as an additional lens. So to me, limiting candidates, whether it be California or internal, is counter to that all-inclusive value. When we want to get the best candidate, I don't see any rationale or justification for why we would limit that pool of the best candidates. And my thinking is, if we have the best candidate or the best candidates internally, then things like an understanding of our California funding structure would come up during that interview. And then our board and our community members would realize how important it is to have someone that's familiar with our funding, and with our formulas, and with our structures. The same I would apply with collective bargaining, right? That those things would come up. So if we contacted a firm, a recruitment firm, to go get us the best nationwide, that we could provide them criteria. Hey, this person needs to have experience with collective bargaining. Hey, this person needs to have a proven record of eliminating opportunity gaps, achievement gaps. This person needs to have a record of working within systems that have, if not California, funding structures that have similar considerations. So I would start with that by saying that to me, limiting, whether, again, it's an internal search or just California, counters our commitment to inclusion and to the equity that we all talk about. So I would favor a process that opens this, our criteria up to any candidate that wants to apply for arguably the best position as a superintendent in the country. So let's go find the best.
Ms. Kerr.
Some of my prepared notes kind of all flow into each other. But I, I want to put it out there before we start, that I think all of us intend, and I will speak for myself, I intend for this process to be incredibly intentional and thoughtful, and understanding that this is the biggest job that we have. Diane and I were both joking earlier today that I'm dreaming about this almost every night. There is not a time in my day when I'm not reminded of the importance of this work that comes from a deep love of this community and this school district, of which I have been a part of for 20 years, and a consumer of, and thankfully and honorably, a leader of. So none of the comments, everything that gets said, I take it in. We don't often have these conversations where we go back and forth, and I know that that's different for folks. So I guess that's a long-winded way to say that sometimes I think in circles, and sometimes I need to process things out loud in order to get to the end result. So what I say first might contradict something that's said earlier or later, and I usually get where I need to go. But I will throw that out there so you are aware of my process, so that someone doesn't come up to you at any meeting and say, "You said this at five-minute mark, and then you said this at the 10-minute mark." And understanding this is a very real and alive process that matters to hundreds of thousands of folks, and I don't take that lightly. And understanding that we are the largest employer in this city, and at the heart of what we do is we educate kids. And so all of those things come into consideration of a very long list of what we expect in leadership. So I'm just throwing that out there to start. As far as internal versus external, I think part of what we're going to hear from the public is that very point. We heard tonight, it should be external, that it should be a nationwide search. I've heard privately, yeah, we can look other places, but it really needs to be someone who knows us, so that we're going to get those differences of opinion with every person that we talk to. And so weighing, is it all or nothing? I think there, there is nuance in there, and being mindful of that. So I think I appreciate keeping it to California. In my work across, with different districts across the state, with CSBA, the unique challenges of California school districts, I think, is a real thing. It's not a made-up thing. It is not something I think people can study from the outside, potentially. But until you're in it and in that process, California is unique and changing all the time. And so I, while I appreciate that far and wide, there might be somebody somewhere out there, I really think that a limit to California is an appropriate way to look at this, which feeds into my next piece, which is the timeline, but I don't think we're going there just yet. Because of where we are and where we need to be by a certain time, I think that that is a reasonable way to look at this.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. We'll get into the timeline in the next round. As I look at this process, reflective of the number of search committees that I've sat on over the years, half of my faculty at City College, 60 full-time faculty, I chaired search committees for half of that faculty. I also chaired search committees for vice presidents at Cal State Dominguez Hills and at City College. So, and some of those searches have been nationwide searches. But in reflecting on, on the district, initially, my concern was making sure that we turned over every stone in looking for a superintendent. But given the discussion tonight about limiting it to California, that would satisfy my concern for a, an open search process because there is a lot of talent here in the state. And that would satisfy my requirements for an external search. So I'm comfortable with limiting the search to California.
I would just urge my colleagues here that if our commitment is to find the candidate that most reflects our values, and again, I'll mention three, to diversity, to equity, to inclusion, that it would be important for us to consider candidates with varying perspectives on equity, inclusion, our achievement and opportunity gaps, our emerging, our work with emerging bilinguals, EOs, as some would say, our consideration of expanding our dual immersion programs in the district. So I don't see a pool of hearing from what are some innovative, new perspectives that are going on in New York, that are going on in Boston, that are going on in Philadelphia, that are urban school districts that have many of the demographic characteristics that we have. I don't see that as either diminishing our candidate pool here in California or dismissing our strong California candidates. I see this part of our robust. If indeed, this is the most important decision that we'll make as a board, then let's get it right. There's, there's no rationale in terms of cost or time. If we're going to interview folks from California, if that's where we're going, then let's interview folks from other states, so that we can hear how other states have it wrong if we think that California has it right, so that we can hear alternative perspectives. So again, I would just ask my board colleagues here to consider, if we're opening it up to California, then let's open it up to the other 49 states. And not just because we're in geographically a state do we presume that the best candidates are in our state.
Mr. Meyer? I have a procedural question. Are we going to vote on each one of these as we proceed? Is that what we're planning to do?
That would be our recommendation to do so.
May I call for the question then on number one?
Okay.
He already called the question, so I can't.
I think we've gone through enough discussion on this. All in favor of...
We don't have a, we don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion. I move that we consider item number one, internal versus external candidates, and specify exactly what we want. Okay, so I'll move.
I move to open the search to national-level search.
Is there a second? So that, that motion dies from lack of a second.
I move that we do a public search that includes candidates both internal to Long Beach Unified, as well as the state, the entire state of California.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. Okay. Everybody understands that motion? Discussion?
Yes. Again, I want to make sure that our colleagues understand that there is no difference between just saying, "We'll interview California candidates," to opening it up. I'd like to hear the rationale for why we would just close it outside of what the superintendent's recommendation is. I'd like to hear from my colleagues what the rationale is for limiting our search to just California candidates.
I'm going to, I'm going to respond to that, Dr. Benitez. I think there's plenty of talent here in California that can satisfy the need for the kind of person that we're looking for. I think we have a lot of talent in California. You know, given the experience that I've had nationally, the chair, as chair of the Council of Great City Schools for the past 15 years. So I've seen a tremendous pool of people in this state that are top-notch people.
I agree with you, Dr. Williams. I think we have fine people in California, but I think we also have excellent folks outside of California.
Right. So we both made our comments.
I think I called for the question. Does that require a vote?
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion, item number one, that is extend the search to California, candidates in California is approved.
Is there a call for any extensions as well?
Okay, thank you, Brent. I forgot you were in the room.
And just a point of order, Brent, if you could remind me, once we're in a conversation, we're in the discussion period of a new motion, if the question was called for a different motion or end of discussion at a previous time, does that apply to the time that we were in discussion on a new motion?
It's a hard question to answer because this board has never adopted Robert's Rules of Order strictly.
Okay.
Right? You've been guided by Robert's Rules of Order, but there's no hard and fast answer for you.
Okay.
Let me see if I can be more responsive to that the next round. Okay. Timeline for the process. Starting, let's start on this end with Ms. Kerr in terms of the timeline. Your...
Sure. I was going to say, I think this is our first step, but it is clearly now our second step and totally within our discretion. I appreciate the robust timeline. I would, personally, I'd love to see us shoot for an appointment on May 6th and work backwards from there. I think we can do a thorough search in a shorter, in that timeframe. The superintendent announced his retirement a month ago. So for folks who pay attention, for folks who are looking for the opportunity to apply for this position, this has not been a secret. It has been covered by the LA Times, it has been covered by EdSource at the statewide level. So I think moving quickly is important. So I appreciate a May 6th, to shoot for a May 6th appointment. Can we talk about recruitment strategy in there because it sort of plays into it or are we going to do that completely? I just think that they're part and parcel of...
I think, I think for sake of clarity, we need to keep these separate.
Well, I think...
Because we're voting on each piece of this, so...
We are, but I think I'm concerned because in the recruitment strategy piece, that talks about adding time to the timeline. So I don't know necessarily that we can individually adopt a timeline without talking about the recruitment strategy.
So you could go to the recruitment strategy first, which would affect your timeline. Correct.
Okay.
So maybe the recommendation, Dr. Williams, is to go to item number three, and this really deals with whether you do it, have Mrs. Ashley lead it solely, or you have Mrs. Ashley lead it with an outside group, an agency, so for example, because that could delay the process. So that, you're right, that decision, you probably should talk about that one first.
Okay.
You're talking about number three, correct, Mrs. Kerr?
Number three first.
So this is the recruitment process. Makes sense.
Okay. Let's skip on down to number three, and we'll come back to number two. Ms. Kerr?
I can wait since I already had an opportunity to speak on number two if that is a problem.
Start it out.
What we're talking about.
Everybody's okay? Okay. I do not believe that we need to do an external recruitment agency merely because the way that those have worked, and I'm actually on executive director search committees for another organization, is the reliance on staff is heavy anyway. So our staff is going to be incredibly engaged with all of these stakeholder groups, with our community groups. We're going to be the ones setting up town halls, filming town halls, live streaming town halls. To bring another agency in to delay the process, I don't necessarily see the need to pay twice. And it's not, we're going to scrimp and not spend money on this, but it is if we are at this point now limiting this to California, I go back to my point of the earlier one, that everybody in California knows that Superintendent Steinhauser has resigned or has retired, is retiring from Long Beach Unified. Everyone knows that his last day is July 2nd. It has, again, made the news in lots of places, which would mean that folks who are interested in this position have had a month to think about it. So if we begin this process quickly, I, my best guess is that those who are going to throw their name into the process are ready to do that if we said we start the process tomorrow.
Okay.
And that we get to do all of this stuff with the talented folks that we have, that's awesome.
I agree. I don't think we should be spending money unnecessarily. And it seems like we'd be doing that just to, you know, it would, it would just be unnecessary to spend that kind of money when we're going to rely on our own staff to do, lie and share the work. So I agree with your comments.
I agree wholeheartedly, and I think Ruth Ashley is well-positioned to lead the recruitment.
Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, I, no takeaway from Ruth Ashley. I think she would do a fabulous job, but I don't think this is a waste of money. I don't think that even the language here, delaying the process, I think that we should not rush or make a hasty decision for the most important position for one of the most high-profile districts in the country. So to me, even the wording delaying the process is problematic here. I think if we want to uphold our commitment to particularly the public outreach aspect of this, the community input aspect of this, that yes, we can certainly determine a timeline and use it as a guide, but that if we truly want to be inclusive of all of our stakeholders, of all these meetings, that, you know, from the organizations that have been identified, that prolonging the process is not a bad thing here. That if we want to get it right, then let's be deliberate, then let's be meticulous, then let's be detailed.
I agree with that, that we have to...
I'm in the middle of my comments, board member Craighead, that this is an area for us that if it's going to cost us money to get it right, then I'm okay. More than 70,000 students' lives are at stake, 3,400 teachers, CSEA members, we heard from our labor partners. So to me, the 50,000 to 75,000, yep, that's deep, but this is an investment in generations of students. We had a superintendent for 17 years. Let's go get it right so that we can have the other great superintendents stay with us 15 or 20 years. So to me, let's pay a firm that specializes in going out and finding the best and then working very closely with our excellent executive team with Ms. Ashley. Thank you, board member.
Well, I would just like to say that I believe the reason the word delay is in here is because we would have to look into the different companies because there are more than one, and so it would take a matter of time for those companies to give us their proposals, and that is a delay. And I don't think it's, I don't think that word is in there, you know, to lead us away from spending that money. It just, it feels to me like we would be spending money anyhow. I don't want to do this in a way that rushes the process or that we don't get it right because this, you know, you've made all the points about why we need to get it right, and I absolutely agree with that. But I think we will be spending money on that, but I also believe that we can handle that process in-house, that it's not necessary to pay somebody else to do that. It sounds like our staff will be taking on a lot of that work anyhow.
And but, and I'm not debating here, board member Craighead, but when we use words like unnecessarily spending money, I take issue with that. This is a necessary investment. And the delay here, I'm using within the context of it's only a delay if we base it on the timeline that's being proposed. If we use the timeline as a guide for the steps that are necessary, then I understand the delay, that it would delay the process, but that's presuming that we make a decision, if we agree to make a decision May 6th, then it is a delay of four weeks if we stick to that timeline.
No one is better positioned to lead this recruitment than Ruth Ashley.
Just a comment. Ms. Ashley has been down this path before, and I do have the absolute confidence that she can lead this search for a superintendent and do that in a, in a, in a very fine fashion. I think we're, Ms. Ashley is well-qualified to lead the search. Can I get...
Can I just make one more comment? I don't think there's any doubt that we all want to be inclusive in this process. And I don't necessarily think that more time necessarily means more inclusivity. It's how we use the time that's in front of us. So when I look at this list of stakeholder groups, one of these groups is meeting tomorrow. I think the de-cac meeting might be tomorrow morning. But my concern in waiting for RFPs, request for proposals, from outside companies to then have them come in to help us have a discussion about what the format of those meetings would look like puts us a minimum of four to five to six weeks from starting to get formal feedback from these stakeholder groups. And while, and we don't have all the time in the world, I don't think, you know, if we push this into May or into late May or June, then whomever is appointed has just a few weeks with the superintendent to look at a really large district together. So I am not at all saying that I want to limit who participates or that somehow I want less engagement because I think that we can move this more quickly in this way. I think actually it allows us a longer time because it starts us immediately in the process to identify what that outreach looks like so that as we take it to all of those groups with that common language and that common process, we get to start that as soon as potentially next week, which means we can schedule more town halls. So I do not want my belief and my wanting this to be shorter to be in any way interpreted that I want less inclusive of a process or that I am trying to limit any voices to participate. So I just want to make that clear, that none of my comments around being thorough and swift in this has anything to do with limiting the ability of anyone to be heard in this process.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that I would like to recommend, make a mode that we use internal recruitment efforts to be managed by Ruth Ashley.
One second.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the recruitment strategy be managed by Ruth Ashley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No discussion, discussion.
Because I actually have a question.
I thought we already had discussion on this.
Not on the motion we have.
Okay.
So you had something, then I had a question for Ms. Ashley.
Let's, let's open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I appreciate board member Kerr's clarification that having a swift timeline doesn't necessarily mean it's not inclusive, but again, I want to be mindful that we passed a resolution, an inclusion resolution last year, and one of the things that came up amongst the recommendations is that inclusion, being inclusive, requires time. It requires resources, right? We talk about this all the time. So all I'm urging my board members to consider is it's a difference between, there's a difference between wanting to be inclusive and dedicating the necessary time, energy, resources that are needed to uphold our commitment around inclusion. So I urge you to consider that as we take the vote.
Just a comment, I really don't see how the process that we're adopting would limit our ability to be inclusive. Inclusivity could be defined in many ways and understood in many contexts. And really, as we unfold this process, the process will inform us in terms of our efforts to be inclusive. So I really don't see that as being a, having an internal recruitment strategy, I'm sorry, having our Ruth Ashley manage this as not being inclusive.
I'm not saying, I'm not, that's not, that's not how I'm directing my comments. Where I'm directing my comments is that if it's necessary to take four more weeks to get it right, then that's the commitment. If it's going to cost, in, you know, in essence, 50,000 to 75,000. So what I want to highlight is that those shouldn't be our only considerations, and I'm not saying that those are the considerations, but again, when I hear terms like unnecessarily spending, I think that that's not consistent with it costs money sometimes to uphold being inclusive. And so I wouldn't want the cost and the four-week delay to be the only basis for our decisions to not hire a recruitment agency or consider hiring a recruitment agency.
And I, and I think it was widely discussed beyond those two items, so...
Dr. Williams, can I ask Ms. Ashley a question? So in this process, if you were to manage this process and with your staff, if within a few weeks you thought that perhaps utilizing the resources provided either by Council of Great City Schools or California School Board Association in terms of an executive search would help make the process better, more inclusive, that there was something that within the process you realized you wanted more support in, would you be open to bringing that consultation on at that time if you deemed it necessary within the process? Because you may very well get into this in a few weeks and decide that perhaps you want more support in a certain area that can be offered by some of those associations that we have affiliations with.
Yes, I would be open to that. I've done searches both ways, with agencies and without, so I'd be very open to that suggestion. Thank you.
I'd like to call for the question.
Okay. This is on item number three, and that item being that Ms. Ashley would facilitate the recruitment strategy for the search. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Abstained? The motion is approved four to oh with one.
Four to one.
Four to one. Four to one? Okay. Now can we go back to item two? Starting with Diana.
I think the timeline looks reasonable to me.
Okay.
Maybe somebody else has another comment on that.
Mr. Meyer?
I like the timeline. I would like to implore, to insist on the May 6th date because that would give the incoming superintendent a longer period of time to work with Mr. Steinhauser, catch up to speed on everything that's going on, if that's possible in six or seven weeks.
So you would, you would...
I like the May 6th.
Concur with...
I do. I concur with Mrs. Craighead.
Okay. And Mrs. Kerr?
And Mrs. Kerr.
Okay. Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, I like the overall sequence of the timeline. I would just like to think through the timeline as more of a guide than, you know, us being completely 100%, you know, with a March 6 deadline. I mean, that if we see an opportunity to strengthen our public engagement, community engagement, that we use that as the consideration versus like a hard March 6 deadline to end that. But I like the approach and I like the...
May 6.
I'm sorry, March, for the public engagement, public engagement and recruitment from January 27th to March 6th, that for me, the critical component of this is still the community input, community engagement, so that we don't use the March 6 as a hard, firm deadline. That's the only thing I would add, but I, I'm good with the sequence and the May.
Okay.
And may I just make one more comment? I agree. I think it's a reasonable timeline unless...
I agree, I think it's a reasonable timeline unless Ruth, in her process, comes to us and says, I need two more weeks. We did in community engagement, we weren't satisfied with the numbers that came out, we want to do more. So I think this is a good guideline, but it allows for, and I would assume Ms. Ashley, that you would keep us posted on that, and you would come to us and say, I know we said this, but I need a little more time here, so that if we're seeing in that process, there's a little, there's flexibility in that, but that generally, I think this is a good guideline.
Let me get a motion on the timeline, and what I'm hearing is that, that we do have some flexibility in that process, and that we will be updated as we move along and progress down this path in terms of the process itself, and that you will update the board as necessary.
Yes.
So I move to approve the timeline recommended by Ms. Ashley with consideration on flexibility on the deadlines, based on updates and information from Ms. Ashley and/or any other considerations to extend the hard.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Let's go to public outreach, starting with Ms. Kerr.
Sure. I think we've talked a lot about this. I think folks have come to the microphone to talk to us about this. Again, this seems reasonable, I appreciate the electronic survey, I appreciate you making it available to the board members, so we can manipulate it and kind of play with it so we know, because that may take some engagement with certain stakeholder groups if that's the way they choose to engage with us. Town halls, absolutely, one in each Board of Area Trustee. I would recommend potentially adding a sixth one that wraps up at the end of the area. If we do all of the areas and potentially a Saturday morning one, that's just generally located for folks who missed an opportunity to attend any of those other previous quote-unquote town halls, if that's the one that they wanted. We know there's going to be lots of other stakeholder groups that they can engage with, but if they really wanted to attend a town hall and they missed the one in their area, that at the end of that process, maybe there's a Saturday morning catch-all one for community folks to be able to go, that could be livestreamed and all that stuff.
And if I may, I would recommend that that additional town hall meeting be centrally located.
Yes.
So that it's easy access for folks, public transportation within the boundaries of the system.
Right. And we, I think we do enough activities on Saturdays to be able to pick a time, whether it's a nine or a nine-thirty start, but something that may catch community members who don't engage with the school district on a regular basis and who are working during the week might be able to engage that way on a Saturday.
Thank you for that, Megan. I would also like to, happy to go to Catalina, I think one needs to be held on Catalina Island.
So, and then my other, other question is, when we engage in district and community stakeholders groups, I assume that there will be a standardized process of questions that are asked, so that every opportunity looks the same in terms of how we're engaging, and if you would make that available to us as board members, so that if we went to a PTA meeting at one of our schools, or attended an event, or wanted to go to one of our high schools, that we could do a similar type of town hall, or smaller town hall, but using the same language and the same process, so that it is compatible with the other feedback that we get, so that it's standardized in language and response.
There would actually be a script available for you to follow?
Okay.
I like that, Board Member. Can I?
I'm sorry, I'm done.
Okay. Board Member Kerr, so I would actually just make two suggestions to the outlined, and I know this is a guide, Ruth, so I appreciate, to the outlined public outreach. So I would word it in a way where we say at least, at least one meeting in each of the BOE trustee areas to give us the option, for instance, if I use the script and want to attend, again, a standing meeting, that we could use that as a formal, you know, if I want to attend, you know, as an example, I know that Martha's here, Latinos en Acción standing meeting, that I could go there in this capacity, get the input and bring it back if it's scripted. So I would make that suggestion. And I think my other suggestion is contingent on whether we decide to establish an advisory committee, because I think that, that those committee meetings would also be standing, published meetings with agenda, so that would be an additional set of meetings. If, when we get to that point, I don't know whether to say it now, because if we don't go with the committee, with the advisory committee, then I would suggest having additional meetings at different times for folks that can't make one of the standing meetings. But I'll reserve those comments to the discussion on the, if we perceive that meeting on that, to have additional times in the evenings.
Can I, can I add one more thing that I wrote? Is potentially having a dedicated email address for folks to give feedback if they can't attend, and they just want to email comments in, that there's one dedicated place that all of those go?
Yeah.
Might be helpful as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, one and all. I also concur with my colleagues about the public outreach process. I, it's pretty much similar to how we deal with looking at issues of facilities in our district, by making sure we do a good thorough outreach to the public. So I'm in concurrence with the public outreach piece as well. Okay, can I get a motion?
Move to go with the recommendations of public outreach with the consideration to have additional meetings, at least one meeting in each of our trustee areas, and the piece on the committee, that we, that we come back to the piece on whether, if we establish a committee, that then we have a broader discussion on any additional meetings and public outreach. So that's the motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. In our public outreach stakeholder groups, I know that there were a couple, Mr. Superintendent, you said we were missing, just so that we get a revised list of these. And I would also encourage us, once we figure out the format and the script, that we, I don't know how we can require this, but that we strongly urge our stakeholder groups to bring students with them, so that students are a part of the stakeholder groups, because I don't think we have any standing student organizations. We have a couple, so we have at least two. One is where it says all students. So it would be Californians for Justice, which is, and then the Student Advisory, Superintendent of Student Advisory Committee.
Oh, I see it, I'm sorry.
Those two, but I highly agree that when we send out information on this, we would encourage students and everybody to go to all these. Again, you can go to as many of these as you want. There's no limit.
Okay. Additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Let's go to advisory committee, let me start off on this side with, what's your name, Diana?
I'm really not feeling the love, okay?
Got to get a better seat.
Well, I haven't been called on, he started on the other side.
Maybe I can jump in the middle.
Go ahead, Diana, go ahead.
Yeah. No, you know what, I'm going to defer to you. You go ahead and start.
I love the idea of advisory committee as proposed and outlined here, and again, based on my comments in terms of stakeholder groups, I would include students, if at all possible, in the advisory committee. And I know the semantics of how many we want to cap it at, who gets what, but I think this is a good opportunity to, we have a student board member here present at our board meetings, to have students as part of our advisory committee. And the CAC is in here as well as the ALB. So I'm good with the advisory committee function, purpose, and again, with the additional meetings being accessible to our community members.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes, Ms. Ashley, if I heard you earlier briefly, when we talked about the potential of an advisory committee, you said these would be day-long meetings, or many hours long, just because of the volume of work that will need to be done, and there will be multiple of them.
Absolutely. It will also be dependent upon the number of applicants.
Okay. So the one thing I would ask for consideration then is if we do have students that participate in that, making sure how we do that with their attendance at school, that it doesn't negatively impact grades and all of those things, so just a consideration as we include students of what that looks like.
Yep.
I have a note, where would they meet? It's a big group. And so I, from my understanding of the comments earlier, is that there would be an open session at the beginning.
Yes.
Where people could come and give public comment to, and then the committee would adjourn to closed session. So just a consideration as we move forward, we could probably have more discussion about that, but, but taking into consideration where they would meet. And I think the other thing that I would mention, and this just goes back to the importance of the process, under purpose, it says in that first line, "to represent various stakeholder groups and serve as a confidential arm of the Board of Education and HRS during this process." And I think that that is key. We're going to talk about public disclosure a little bit later, but understanding in lots, in many of our committee groups and advisory groups, and I've been on a lot for going back ten or twelve years from different things, understanding the absolute need for confidentiality in this process is of the utmost importance to me, so that anyone who participates in this way understands that they are bound by law to not talk about the process, in the same way that we are bound to not talk about what we talk about in closed session. This is important and necessary, and I just feel the need to be very strong in saying to folks who are interested in this, that part of saying yes to this is that absolute confidentiality is a responsibility to the district and to the process. And I think I've been.
They would be required to sign confidential statements.
And in addition to signing, I would hope that someone like Brent Norr could address the group in terms of confidentiality.
Exactly.
So that it would almost be like sending them to shortstop, so.
We'd obviously consider like a Brown Act training for.
Yeah, absolutely. And let's remember we're adding ALB to that advisory group.
ALB and CAC.
And CAC, right. Do we have a motion on that?
We don't.
Did any, did Diana, did you have a comment?
The only, the only, I would, I would just say I agree with everything that confidentiality is of the utmost importance, that the location be centrally convenient to people, that we take care of the students who would be a part of the advisory committee, and that also the list includes CAC and ALB. So I'm just kind of summarizing what's already been said.
Okay, so I move that we establish an advisory committee as outlined in number five with the amendments made and the considerations spoke about tonight.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. We're going to get now to public disclosure of finalists, and this time I'm going to start with Dr. Benitez.
So, thank you, Dr. Benitez. So I want to clarify my, my comments from our information session at our last board meeting with respect to the proposal that I made to, for an opportunity for community members to meet with finalists. So I see it as an opportunity for community members to meet with finalists, not to vet candidates, not to interview candidates. So this is what I would propose. So I want to clarify that, I'm not for community members interviewing candidates here. So here's what I would propose in terms of the discussion that we initiated last week. I'm thinking of an opportunity for finalists, whether that's three, or five, or however many we end up deciding on, to have a community presentation, let's say a twenty-minute presentation here at our chambers, on, you know, a question like, what do they see as the future of public education? Or, you know, what is their vision for the purpose of public education? A broad question that they could speak to, and that then the public that would attend the meeting and/or view, that they could provide input on that, but that they wouldn't be like interviewing candidates, that they could provide feedback on input on what they heard from candidates, and then that we would go into closed session and, you know, proceed with our confidential decision. So the public, again, would fill out an evaluation, or feedback sheets, or what have you, and we'd go into closed session and take that input into account. So just wanted to clarify that, because I am not in favor of finalists being publicly interviewed here.
Although I have a question about that. If, if the reason for not doing public interviews is to have, you know, discretion with people who may not want their current school districts to know that they're interviewing somewhere else, or whatever reason, if they wish to remain anonymous, and then we have some type of public forum where they're being asked a question, or something to that effect, that doesn't address that part of it.
Yeah, I would liken it to, Dr. Williams has brought up all the searches that he's had an opportunity to participate in, and in most, if not all of those searches for university presidents, high-level management, they come to our campus and they do a presentation. And the campus community can come and listen to the presentation, and then the campus community that attended the presentation can write in, through the format that we deem appropriate, their feedback and input on the candidates. So it's not part of the interview process, but that's what most universities use in terms of whether it's a president position, a dean's position, an associate vice president position. So in this case, I think the superintendent position, I would characterize as that kind of profile position.
You know, I can concur with a lot of that, because we, that's what we used to do. But I think given at this level, it might be a little different, and I think we can still get there with respect to the interview questions that we ask, some of those interview questions, which kind of brings me to the interview questions themselves. I would love to see us just spend some time understanding the direction of the district five years from now, ten years from now. And I talked about this at the last board meeting, but looking at the SWOT analysis that would kind of give us that, that information about our strengths of the district, our weaknesses, the opportunities and the threats of the district. So we can look at very broad issues as part of that, like funding, declining student populations, housing issues as part of that process, and hopefully come to interview questions that will address that when the candidates are interviewing, whether it's with the advisory committee, or whether it's with the school board, where we look at the finalists who are coming, who are recommended by the advisory committee. But at least look at the questions that are going to impact this district five and ten years from now, and make sure we as a, as a board are able to understand what that is as well. And I don't know if it would be one session where we can all sit down and go through a process like that, but I think that process in itself, at some point, would inform the kinds of questions that we would ask these candidates.
Yeah, and for me, it's just an opportunity, again, just holding to our commitment of community engagement, for community members to hear from the candidates themselves. So the rationale for the no recommendation here is that public interviews would decrease the likelihood. I agree with that, but I'm not talking about nor suggesting public interviews. I'm proposing that we consider, and again, we can talk about format, but that it wouldn't be an interview, right? That it would be a moment in time for our community members to hear from the finalists that ultimately we would make the decision on. So I think just, I'm in agreement with the recommendation, but I think I just wanted to clarify that my, my proposed sort of public FaceTime wasn't for interviews, because I do agree that that would dissuade candidates.
I'm a little bit confused. Our advisory committee will be advised to keep everything confidential. They're going to look at candidates. Then all of a sudden, we're saying we're going to have public interviews of the finalists? Doesn't make sense. Confidentiality to me is paramount throughout this entire process.
So I think for me, and I know we're getting hung up on public interviews, so I get, Dr. Benitez, that that was not the intention in your comments. I do not believe that there should be a public interface with the final three candidates. And not because I'm not open to process and I'm not being inclusive, I don't want to be characterized as being that, that is not what my rationale is. My rationale in part has to do with folks in the process not disclosing to their current employers, I think that is a real thing for folks. I think that is a real thing for folks. But I also think if we put three people in a room, let me back up. We've agreed to an advisory committee process. We have agreed to a robust public outreach and stakeholder engagement process. Those groups will pick folks from their ranks to serve on the advisory committee, which will do review the roles and responsibilities, review applications, and conduct preliminary interviews. I think this is the part potentially where the representative democracy in us gets hard. But I really believe that to put a couple of folks in front of a group of people to talk about their vision creates discord for the eventual person who is chosen. Because then potentially we have a subset of the community who agreed with the other person's vision of public education. And so you've hired someone who is now competing with folks that weren't chosen. And I go back to, I take this very seriously. And I intend to take the very robust public outreach that is formal and informal that I do myself. I will wholeheartedly take the recommendations and the advice of the advisory committee as their way of representing everyone to bring to us who they feel are the few best contenders. And I believe that it is then on us privately to do those interviews and have those conversations. So that the person who emerges from that process as our next superintendent has had those robust advisory committee recommendations, they've been looked at and vetted by the reps of those groups that we've asked to engage with us, as well as us who were elected to do the work. And so I think that having FaceTime with multiple people can be harmful to the eventual person who is chosen. And again, I will reiterate, this is not because I don't want to be inclusive of people and that I am trying to limit access. It is not that at all. But I think this is the part where I take very seriously the role that I was elected to do, which was make this decision in consultation robustly with community that we've outlined here as an acceptable process. So that's where I stand.
Thank you, Ms. Kirk. I just want to throw out a scenario. You know, while, while I, I do concur with, with, with Member Benitez that that is a process we've used at the CSU level. I'm just thinking now, at, at this process, if a candidate were to call the district and say, can I be assured of confidentiality if I submit an application? And we say to that candidate that we will have a public a public questioning of the finalists, of the final three. Might that person decide not to, not to participate? That's a concern I would have.
And again, I'm, I'm not suggesting, nor would I be comfortable with a public questioning of the candidate. I mean, if, if, if the uncomfortable part is the dynamic of having the public, then we could videotape the candidates and show the videos of the candidates and have people provide input and feedback. And I appreciate, I think this is a great conversation because as, as Board Member Kerr was sharing her thoughts on it, it got me going too. So I would say that the same would be true, I mean, segments of our constituencies are not going to be happy with what, with, with a choice, all right? But I say, I think the same could be said if we're providing inputs and avenues for folks to give us their perspectives on who we should select, what process we would use, that they could also say, well, we gave you all this input and you still chose who you wanted to choose. Anyway, and we didn't even get to meet the candidate. So I think this allows for us to say, and, and you know, again, the format, and I, I don't want to get into semantics right now, but if the concern is that candidates would feel like, I don't want to get, you know, put in a public arena and then have questions thrown at me, that's one thing. If it's the confidentiality, I appreciate that. I, I, I think that's an important consideration. But if it's the actual format, I'm not suggesting questions or us being there. I mean, a consideration could be, like I said, you know, having each one of them develop a, a minute, I mean, a 10-minute video, 15-minute video, that then we could get feedback on. That would be based on the interview questions, you know, prompts.
But their names would still be out there.
I agree.
Public domain, that's the problem.
I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with the scrutiny of a public interview.
Yeah, so that's, that's the only problem. So, okay, can we conclude this by getting a motion on the public disclosure finalists?
I move that we do not have public interface with the final three candidates.
Second.
Okay. We've got a, we've got a motion and a second discussion.
I'd just like to add, you know, we have this widespread public outreach. Town hall meetings, electronic surveys. We're going to have a wonderful advisory committee representing all the stakeholders. Let's face it, folks, it's going to come down to us to make the choice. Not, let's not weasel out of it. Let's accept that responsibility and take the recommendation from the advisory committees.
All right. Further discussion?
Absolutely. I agree 100% Mr. Meyer. I just not, don't know if I want a candidate for this school district in 2020 to not want to engage with community members, not want to present something to community members.
I think that'll be part of their resume, don't you?
Yeah, and you know, we've got a, we've got a, a healthy list of community people that will be, that will be vetting these candidates. And also we'll be getting public input as well. So I think we'll be well served. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions, the motion is approved four to zero with one abstention. That concludes our process, and thank you all for, for walking through this. Appreciate you very much. We are now at report of board members. I think I heard all the reports already. Let's start with, with Ms. Craig.
Do you mean you've heard all you want to hear? Is, is that what you mean?
Well, not quite.
Well, he said it in a nice way.
Yeah. I'll, I'll just mention a couple of things because it's bedtime. There was the MLK parade. That was great. We saw kids and parents. This is the Reader's Digest version. A lot of us attended the CAC meeting at Browning. There was a quote by Dr. Brown who said the, that she was talking about the collective power in the room, and I appreciated those sentiments because there was a time when there wasn't a lot of cohesiveness with the group. And so now this group is very cohesive and they are making great strides. They bring recommendations to the board. We're able to act on a lot of those recommendations. Dr. Brown, thank you so much for your work with that group because honestly, you're, you're helping in tremendous ways. And I know there were more things, but I can't think of them now. Always, always great things happening in our district.
Go ahead, Mr. Meyer.
May I? Okay. Just quickly, great, great parade. The most moving thing for me was being among students on the district truck and talking with two outstanding students from Milliken High School. Delightful young ladies who are in the female academy, and they told me about the success they're having and the engagement. I gave them my card and I said, I want you to give this, my, my board card to your sponsor and share with them how proud we are of you, of the work you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Dr. Benitez.
Yes, I have, pardon me, I have a mint in my mouth, so I'll put it on the side. I, I want to say that I love.
Will it come back to you?
I'm good, I'm good. I'll just keep it up here. I loved tonight's discussion, so thank you to my colleagues up here. Thank you to our community members that showed up today. This is what democracy looks like. So I'm just very appreciative of all the work and, and good intentions that I think everyone exhibited up here. And the, I think it raises the esprit de corps of our, of our board, and so I'm just very thankful and appreciative. And this is why we got elected, and this is why one of our three, as Board Member Kerr always refers to, responsibilities. This is what it's all about. So thank you, and thank you to all of our community members that took the time to come out. I would just encourage you to keep coming out, right? Whether it's seen as swift or methodical, the process, it is what it's going to be, what it's going to be. So this is the time to either reengage or engage with us, and we're listening.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Ms. Kirk.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the community members who continue to come out and support the important work. I think tonight is one of those examples and probably our highest example at my time on the board of the importance of the work that we do. We know that there often aren't reporters taking notes in the back of school board meetings. I think maybe they're live, they watch the live stream now because I've seen some tweets from them.
Who was taking pictures today?
I think it was probably someone from Building Trades, potentially. But we know that the work we do sometimes seems mundane. They're the same finance reports, they're the same instruction reports unless you get into the weeds and read them. But we know that the work that happens here and the decisions that get, get made here and the discussions and conversations we have impact this entire community and this entire region. So thank you to everyone who participates, either for the first time here or for those who are here every time. I am grateful for that work that you do. I think that's all I have to say. I have a couple of announcements when it's announcement time, but thank you.
Yes, and let me just reiterate that sometimes the conversations up here can be hard, but really appreciating the demeanor of the people on this board and being able to make sure that we, we keep it real, that we, we be, we're able to express our, our concerns and, and, and then come back and be able to function as a board with the, with the focus and the intent that is important to this district. And I talk to a lot of folks in a lot of school districts, and, and, and in all seriousness, they just wonder how Long Beach does what it does. They, to, and it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's an absolute good feeling to be able to hear that from people. And that, and one thing I say to them all is that this district focuses on the students. That's our top priority. They don't focus on an organization, they don't focus on company X, they focus on the kids in the classroom. And that's what distinguishes this district. And, you know, in that regard, I'm very proud of this board and the work that we do to make sure that we keep that focus. I did attend a superintendent forum, and I was there with two of my board colleagues, Diana and Megan, but we didn't sit together, so we did not violate the Brown Act.
That's true.
But the young man, Chris, not you, but.
I'm not young.
Chris, who did the presentation on social media was absolutely phenomenal in terms of what social media is, how we can turn that around and make that an instructional process in the district. And, and the things that, the positive things about social media and some of the negative things about social media. And how the district is trying to address that. I mean, like, some of the examples he gave of, you know, one student who was getting dressed in the locker room and unknowingly someone taking photos of her, and those photos were out on social media. And when she walked into her class, everybody was, was looking at her quizzically and her not knowing that those photos have been floating out, out there in the social media. Bringing that kind of awareness to what social media can do on the negative part of that and what it can do on the positive part of that. And it's one of those things that we, we need to be able to balance and address. So I thought that was an excellent presentation. The other is I had an opportunity to ride with my colleagues in the MLK parade. After about seven years, it was great. Being on the cattle truck, I had a great time. Being with the students.
Who was with you? Are we cattle?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just naming the truck, John, not the people. But a great time, sharing that space with my colleagues. Again, for that occasion of, of being able to celebrate the anniversary of Martin Luther King, great, great event.
Also, can I add one thing to that? You reminded me, we were not cattle on that truck. I, I met a couple of very fine young men from Washington Middle School. And that's always a highlight, is when we can interact with the kids and meet these students that are doing so well.
Absolutely. I think maybe, I was, I was trying to be facetious, but I, I see it backfire, so I take that back. But superintendents report.
Yeah, I, I said this before, and I'm going to say it again tonight. Yes, it's been a long evening, but you just did two big decisions tonight. You, you passed a community workforce agreement, which has been in the long, you know, years in the development, which I really believe is, is going to be a model for na, uh, school districts throughout the nation with lasting impact. And obviously, we, we know about the dollar amount, but it's really about changing lives. And it's really, again, again, an example of what can happen when you collaborate and, and you don't agree on 100% of the things, but you agree on doing the right thing. So, and the other part is what you just did today, which was part two of what you did at the last board meeting. And, and I said it then, and I'll say it again today. This was a great example of civics and, and respect of one another. I don't know if many of you are like me, but I was watching the hearings last night, of course, until, and they didn't have that at, at the national level. And so we should ship this video off to those folks for having them see it. And I think all young people should see this because there's great pride in here, there's great respect for one another in here, and, and you are making, which I would agree with all of you, is probably the one, probably the most important decision you have to make as a, as a board member. And I want to thank you for that. And Mrs. Ashley, I want to thank you for taking on this huge responsibility. You are a stellar employee, and we'll do a beautiful job. And, and I just want to thank everybody because it's a, it's a feel-good moment. It really is, because good things are going to happen, and the future is bright, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We'll now move to announcements. Ms. Kirk.
Yeah, just a few. I wanted to give a shout out to our translation team as well at the superintendent parent forum. We always try to speak slowly, and Superintendent Steinhauser does not always speak slowly, but Mr. Itzen speaks twice as fast. So I think there was literal steam coming out of translation. So thank you for translating that very dynamic presentation. I know you guys worked very hard. Just a couple of announcements. Education celebration is this coming Saturday. So if you have students entering the system at any age and kindergarteners or going into middle school and you want to check it out, is an excellent opportunity for you to see all of it on display altogether and the great teams that we have at nine o'clock.
Nine to 12.
Nine to 12 at Cabrillo. Nine to one.
The posters say 12, I think.
Let's go with 12, okay. It's at least until 12.
There's no lunch break.
Right. Also, Speaker Anthony Rendon is hosting a Cash for College event, which for any of our high school students at any high school, it's happening at Jordan, but all students are eligible. It really is an opportunity to come and work with people who can help you write grants to get cash for school next year. So I encourage all seniors, after they have healed a bit from finals this week, to join us at Jordan High School from 10:00 to 1:00, I believe. Or at least 12:00. I lost my flyer. At Jordan to do Cash for College sponsored by Speaker Anthony Rendon. And before we meet next time, we will have one, another Kinder Fest at Roosevelt Elementary School. So for those of you who have young ones entering the district, it's a great day of workshops and fun and books and all of that stuff for incoming kinders.
And also on February 1st, there's the LCAP Forum at Cabrillo, and, and information's gone out, but it will go out again.
Thank you. Another, other announcements?
And do we not have a math collaborative going on this Saturday at Cabrillo?
Let's see, this Saturday?
I've got it on my calendar. If not?
That's the Ontario, is that the Ontario Airport Project?
There's an Ontario project going on then.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, very good.
Yeah, the Ontario Airport Project represents Bob Barbosa and some of our math stu, our students from, and I'll be, I'll be emceeing that, so I'd love to see folks come out to that project, see that project. Also, just wanted to thank our Office of Media Services, Ray Sharp. Also, just wanted to thank our Office of Media Services, Ray Sharp, Rob, all the other folks. And Ray, how many years have you been with the district?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Rob, how many years you been with the district?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Now, he's a former student of John Meyer, right?
Everybody's a former student.
And I'm finding out, you've got acolytes all over the world, John, but he actually, he actually says some very good things about my colleague, how much he learned from, from Mr. Meyer. So, John, I just want to say, you've done a hell of a job.
Did you ask him how long ago he graduated, so you could establish my age?
No, I didn't. No, I didn't, but I just wanted to point that out, thank you both very much, and the entire team.
A couple of things, I want to make sure we give a shout out to our school board member from Cabrillo that had to leave early.
Yes.
All right, so she did great. And then, Ray, when does this get uploaded, tonight's meeting?
Well, it's, as soon as it gets captioned.
Okay.
So depending on how long they take to do the caption, now it's, it's streaming right now.
Right.
It's live right now, but then we have to get it, get a caption, and then it will be on, on regular, online on TV.
Okay.
It takes a couple of days, but if you subscribe to the YouTube channel and get the alerts, you'll get an alert when the caption version is available.
Got it.
So you'll get live alerts, but then when something comes online new, you get alerts for that as well, but usually takes a couple of days.
Ray, again, thank, thank you and your team, appreciate you. Entertained a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you all.